January 30th, and we are all but Cheryl Lynn around the table. Oh, she's coming? All right, thank you.
She's coming over.
We have two, three items on the agenda tonight. Again, council, I'd like to remain, you to refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete, or until they give me a signal, okay? Both ways. So, 3.1, council will review options for the future library operations. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, to present. Nathan?
Thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to discuss the status of Goodyear's library operations. As you are aware, we have enjoyed a great partnership with Maricopa County to provide library services to our residents since opening our inaugural library in 2009. The current IGA is due to expire in June of 2017. Tonight, we would like to take an opportunity to present some options for future library services. With us this evening, we have Diana Camacho, she's our management assistant, and then we also have Maricopa County library staff. Cindy Kolazinski, who's the library director, John Warbach, their finance manager, Aaron McFarland, branch operations administrator, and Corinne Wagner, our library region manager. So this evening, we'll discuss the history. We'll talk about how the library is performing by the numbers. Diana will share some of the latest survey information from our library users. We'll talk about current operations. We'll discuss what future operations may look like, and then, of course, a staff recommendation. And then, of course, we'd like to get your feedback on the direction that follows. From a historical perspective, we established our inaugural IGA with Maricopa County in 2006, and that led to our inaugural interim space opening for library services. It was approximately 1,500 square feet in March of 2009. In February 2012, the citizen survey indicated that library services was a high priority for our residents, and in response, the IGA with Maricopa County was extended in February of 2012, which led to our opening of our new space and our new library, just under 10,000 square feet, in February of 2014. The current library is scheduled to terminate June of 2017. So by the numbers, what this chart depicts is basically, it reflects the numbers in these, in these categories for our last year of operation in our interim space. That was our smaller 1,500-square-foot space, to where we have come today, our last fiscal year in our new space. So it really demonstrates the growth from our old space last year to where we are at today. And I'm happy to show that in terms of library gate count and annual visitors, that has experienced a 50% increase. 139,000 are visiting the library every year. That is a big number. Just to keep that into perspective, the Goodyear ballpark for spring training will see 150,000 during the month. So that's a number that we should all be very, very proud of. In addition, program attendance has shot up 228%, which led to more classes, 337, 373% increase there. Circulation saw a 69% increase. It's important to note that this is a result of, of the community needs of Maricopa County, but also the work that the Friends of Goodyear Library and Councilmember Wally Campbell does to support these efforts. Approximately $7,000 have been contributed to the library from the Friends group to assist with programs and materials and supplies, as well as training for staff as well. And so, could not have done it without the help of and support of the Friends of Library and Councilmember Campbell's efforts there. Diana's going to share some survey results.
According to the citizen survey of 2016, 93% of the visitors were satisfied with the programs and activities held at the library. 88% of those rated the library services as above average or excellent. Of that 139,000 visitors, 75% of those reside here in Goodyear. 74% of them came to the library with the purpose of checking out materials, and 28% participated in the great offerings of the library programs. As part of the survey, visitors were asked what they thought about Goodyear's library services. As you can see from the responses, library services falls right in line with council's strategic focus areas. For example, "I love unexpectedly running into my neighbors" exemplifies a sense of community. "The programs for kids are great, supports a high quality of life." It should also be noted that visitors have commented that they really enjoy being interconnected to other libraries, they enjoy the Maricopa connection, and they have all the books that they like.
In terms of current operations, Maricopa County is current, under our current IGA, Maricopa County is responsible for funding and managing library operations. This includes covering all operational costs, staffing, circulation, equipment, maintenance, programming, and Goodyear is responsible for providing the facility and facility maintenance. This model is in line with the county's desire to assist smaller cities and start up library operations, and is targeted for cities with a population of less than 50,000. As you're aware, Maricopa County has continued to provide library services free of charge despite our growing population. However, Maricopa County has informed us that this will, that we will be responsible for funding library operations upon the current IGA expiring June 30th of 2017. Now, it is important to note that the city has been planning for this, and the operating dollars we will be discussing tonight have been part of the citywide operation cost So we really have two options to consider this evening. The first option is to remain with Maricopa County under a revised IGA, and the second is to transition to a Goodyear-operated library. So if we take a look at option one, continue operations with Maricopa County under a revised IGA, the Goodyear would be responsible for reimbursing Maricopa County. Maricopa County would continue to operate the library, and Goodyear would be responsible for reimbursing them for actual costs, plus 10%, 10% overhead. And this is estimated to be $774,200 the upcoming fiscal year. I'd like to give you a little snapshot of how that breaks down. You can see salary, wages, and benefits is the lion's share of that 504,000 budget. The other is books and supplies and materials at 161,000. That brings us to a subtotal of $703,800. The, we had the overhead, 10%, $70,000. That brings us to $774,000 for the actual costs, projected costs to operate the library for option one. It's important to note that this option provides for continuity of services, so our residents and users wouldn't skip a beat here. They continue to enjoy the services that are provided now, as well as access to Maricopa County's inventory of convenient access to materials, programs, and expertise. The second option is to transition to a Goodyear-operated library. This will require a two-phased approach, so I'm going to talk about this option in terms of two different phases. The first phase is to contract with Maricopa County for one year to allow for one year of transition planning. And so, this basically would be a base cost of the 774,200 that was shared with you for option one. So that would be the cost for, the base cost for option two, phase one. And then, in addition to that, we would have some one-time costs. $20,000 to transition a new database, and 125,000 to hire a library consultant who would be responsible for overseeing the transition. In terms of transition services, there are contracts that need to be executed with loaning consortiums and networks. There's a staffing that needs to be set up, policies, procedures, and this consultant would, would come online to assist us with those efforts. Phase two of this would take place, actually, let me, let me go to the budget here for phase one and show you what this looks like. Again, just as I explained, this top portion is exactly what we would pay under option one for, for year one, but then we add the one-time costs of 125,000 for a consultant to assist with the transition, and then the migration of the database, 20,000. So that brings us, that's how we're getting to the 919,000 for fiscal year 18. So then, in fiscal year 19, after that year of transition occurs, Goodyear would take over 100% of library operations, and the cost, the projected cost for this is 882,900. These are projections, and let me show you where these differences occur. So if you remember, option one, salary, wages, and benefits showed about $500,000 under Maricopa County. That covered nine FTEs. Maricopa County has the luxury of having 17 locations to operate, and so they're able to gain some economy of scales on some of their staffing levels, particularly in the IT function. And so, if we were to take over and do a Goodyear-run operated library, we would require the need for an additional IT staff to help, not only with the troubleshooting that occurs, but all of the labeling and the, the scanning and barcoding of, and cataloging of all the And so that's the primary difference there on the staffing level. The other difference here in the budget, you can see there's an increase in, under the equipment repair, maintenance, and service contracts. Service contracts right now that we're not paying actual dollar for to take part in these loan consortium groups does require licensing fees, and that's what's reflected there. And so, that's how we basically are getting to the 882,000 for option two. With option two, again, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a two-phased approach, one year of transition, second year, we would, we would begin operating fiscal year 19. Some considerations I'd like you to consider is, with this, we would lose some, some library expertise. Maricopa County has a whole department that operates 17 libraries, and they're in the business of providing library services, and so that would be tough to match under, under this option. Reduce convenient access to materials and borrowing networks. We feel that we would be able to match the number of materials, both physical as well as electronic services through consortium and borrowing networks. The, the challenge is that Maricopa County has access to those within three to four days. It may take us two to three weeks to get that same material for the user, so there is, there is some impact there. And then additionally, something to consider is, we would have to start from scratch, so all of the library card users that currently exist now, they would have to reapply, and we would have to issue new cards to the current users. And so here are the, the two recommendations side by side. Option one is the most cost-effective, allows us to, you know, maintain the library, the current level of library expertise that we experience with, with the county, allows for the best continuity of, in terms of delivering services and programs to our residents. Convenient access to materials and programs. Option two, again, it's a two, it's a two-phase approach. Year one, it would cost us approximately 919,000. Moving forward, approximately 882,000. We would have reduced convenient access to materials. Again, we feel like we could match that access, but it wouldn't be as convenient. And then, of course, the user impact, they're, they would have to wait a little longer than what they're waiting now to get materials, and they would have to reapply and get new cards issued. Additionally, with option two, there are, there is an impact to our other internal resources. So there will be an impact to IT, there will be an impact to human resources, to Parks and Recreation. There will be an impact to procurement, who would essentially have to, would assist us in establishing these contracts and book purchasing contracts. And so with that, it's staff recommendation for option one, but really, we'd like to hear from you on where your thoughts are at, and so we have our marching orders to kind of move forward from here. So with that, we'll open up to, to questions.
Thank you very much. We would like to start the questions. By the way, Councilman Holman is here. Sorry. Councilman Pizzello.
Would you go back to the detail on the option one? Is this the actual, what it's costing us right now, or do we have a contract from the county for this amount of money to perform the services for next fiscal year?
Council, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, it's a great question. This, up to this point, has been free, and the county has provided this service to us. And these are the actual costs. Roughly, they, they, they increase every year with, you know, this year where they're, they're going to be impacted by minimum wage increases and increases for materials, things like that.
So this is a good number, as far as what it's going to cost us next year?
This is, this is the best estimate we have provided by the county, that if we're generating the contract, this is the number that would be in that number. And we'll adjust each year because it is based on actual costs.
All right. So as we go forward with this number, I guess my question is, is, first of all, then maybe you just answered it, can we get a multi-year contract out of them with escalators? And two, how hard will this number be when you bring, I assume, a contract before us on the service that we provide? Because I would think the county has some really hard numbers as far as what it costs to operate them, so they should be able to give us something that we can go ahead and put into the budget to make sure those numbers are reasonable from our perspective.
The, these were the numbers that were provided directly from the county as late as two weeks ago. We've been getting numbers from them over the past year and a half that we've been part of the budget planning set-aside. And I would say they're, they're pretty close to, to what it should be. And in regards to your question in terms of multi-year contract, the contract that we would bring forward would be a five-year contract with an option to renew every year. So five-year with one-year renewals, or renewable every year, basically.
And I assume there'll be some escalators in there that we have to sign off on, or whatever the case may be, so we have some options there, depending on the cost that they bring for us, the second, the third, and the fourth, and fifth year?
Yeah, the language in the contract would state that Goodyear and the county would, would agree to the budget for the upcoming year.
Okay. Set-asides. I, I know we have set-asides. What's in the current year budget? I, I guess my question is, is it half we have to make up next budget year? Because we have been setting money aside, just like our reserves, and I don't know if we put half aside, or what? Does anybody know how much money we got set aside for this right now?
We call Lori Rigenwath, our budget manager. I'm phoning a friend here.
Thank you.
That's your lifeline, right?
That one, anyway. I don't know many others he has. When we set up the FY '17 budget, the current year budget, we created a $1.25 million operating cost set-aside, which again, functions like the PIC set-aside. It was money that we spent on one-time costs instead of ongoing costs, so that we have that ongoing capacity available in the future. In that, we took the existing CIP, any projects that were there, when we expected they opened, what their operating costs would be, as well as the police squad and the library as known upcoming costs, and we spread each over the life that it would take to get there. So in essence, in that estimate, there's half of the costs of the operating costs for the library are in the current year set-aside, because we assumed it would come online in 18, so the second half we'd pick up in the 18 budget.
Okay. Like, and the follow-up of that thought, the police would be very similar, because we were looking at bringing that second squad on the next fiscal year, so it's got about half of the coverage in there right now.
Correct. Yeah, in essence, I mean, it's an average for all of those years, for all those costs, but in essence, it includes half of both the squad and the library.
So we're not looking at $774,000 next year of new money, we're looking at roughly $387,000 if I did my math correct?
Correct. And I believe we had it in it at this $1 amount.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next. Councilman Lortano.
First of all, Nathan, I want to congratulate you and your fantastic library staff, because to get that many people into a library with all the day and age of electronic media is just fantastic, so.
That's, I share that with the county. Thank you.
I see them back there, so thank you. I just want to say thank you, because that's, I just never hear any bad words about the library. People absolutely love it. I, I'm leaning towards option one, I think that's the most feasible option. But I did have a question. For the classes that are provided there now, I think you had a great coding class and some other, is the county the one providing that, or do we, how does that work?
Yeah, those are all provided by the county, so.
And if we did the IGA as option one, would we be able to continue to have those classes there?
Yeah, the IGA would be to maintain the, the same service levels right now, and it is a high-performing, in a lot of categories we discussed, it's, it's number two out of their whole network in some of those areas, so it is something to be very proud of.
So I think I'm on board for option one.
Councilwoman Stipp.
My, keeps reloading, so I have to, I can't put my fingers on exactly what I was looking for, because I think you've covered it. What is the current cost of the library?
Bill, can you pull your microphone a little closer, please? Thank you.
The current cost of the library to us?
Currently, right now, the, Maricopa County is providing 100% of the operation and funding that, so our current costs are facility-related costs, and those are, I believe, right about $66,000.
Okay. I knew you had covered it, I sort of was looking for it, anyway. So the, does the library itself generate any revenue?
It's a great question. Yes, they do. There is, I want to say it's approximately $30,000 in revenue that's generated primarily through fines.
I was laughing. I just paid my fine.
However, some of those aren't directly attributed to, their, their system is, is all interlinked, and so it's my understanding that, that those are fines that may or may not have occurred as a result of infractions here, but that's how much is being collected here.
Okay. So we have our own Mr. Bookman, for those Seinfeld fans out there. Anyway, all right, so the, the last question I have then is about capital costs. The option one kind of shows it, but kind of doesn't. We talk about O&amp;M costs, asset management. Are there ongoing costs? You know, we saw a extremely detailed cost breakdown on the next subject that we're going to have on the ambulance service, and we don't have it nearly detailed on this. So I'm curious if there's other costs that we're attributing to one program but not another that we're not seeing.
We have vetted this out pretty, pretty good with, with Maricopa County staff. These numbers can't come strictly from their, their budgeting team who's with us this evening. They can talk about those numbers probably a little, little better than, than I can. In terms of other costs that aren't captured here, it would be this right here, that the city will establish an asset replacement plan. We currently own all of the equipment and that's, that's being used right now. It's still fairly new. The county has told us that they are actually going to replace the computers on their dime this year, and so that will push back the need for replacement of those computers out some ways, but this, we will have to establish an asset replacement plan, and it's kind of an unknown until we get in there and establish what that may come out to do. I will tell you that there won't be any impact next year. We'll plan for FY '19, and that asset replacement plan will come back with all the other replacement plans that we've established with the city.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Osborn.
Thank you, Nathan, and certainly for the last few years, the county, you've done a fabulous job. I think that we all agree. We've, we've heard great things, and I'm, I'm very pleased, and very pleased at the growth that the city has seen with our library. Couple of things, you know, option one certainly does sound like the best bet, and, and I think that if you, if you look at it in the standpoint of our citizen, our customer, that the accessibility, the, the ease of the transition, that there won't be really anything that would affect our citizens in seeing this, is, is very important. I, I think the cost kind of speaks for itself. I would like to know, couple of things that, and like I said, everybody's been pretty happy for quite a few years, so, so that's all, all good things. Couple of things, so, I saw that within there you had 28% for programs. Show that, that page. Go back to that. You were showing the, the statistics, the surveys, or whatever. Right, thank you. 28% participated programs. That seems low, but I don't know if that's normal. So what, can you give me a little input on that?
Yeah, let me ask the county to come up and support that question, as they can compare that to their other libraries.
Great, thank you.
Cindy Kolazinski, she's the library director for Maricopa County.
Thank you so much for inviting us as well. As far as that percentage, what you're looking at is the people through the door, that percentage of that 139,000 participated in a program in addition to whatever else they came to do. If they came to use Wi-Fi, if they came to check out a book, if they came to download digital materials. So that is not low, when you're looking at the scope of your entire community, what people are coming actually to do at your facility.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. The other two things, so I have to know, do any other cities of our size and scope do it themselves, or does it do, is it really the thing to do is be with the county?
I anticipated that question. I'm seeing the, Elmo, that's very good. Congratulations.
There we go. So this is a chart that reflects several libraries, who the operator is, and then the square feet that is being operated. So Goodyear is county-operated. Gilbert, it also has the, the populations associated with each city, so Goodyear is also county-operated. One of my speaking notes, and I didn't mention it, but along going with, with recommendation one, Gilbert went through a full study with a consultant in 2012 to look at exactly what we're looked at this evening, and their findings strongly supported staying with the county, which, which Gilbert did. So I just thought I'd share that with you. But you can see here, Peoria is city-operated with a population of 162,000. Surprise, it's county-operated, population of 126,000. Avondale was county, and they transitioned to a city operation, and Glendale and Buckeye are both city-operated.
Okay. Last question. By any chance, if we worked this all out, is there a possibility of maybe having once a month a bookmobile go up to Estrella to help some of the, the other people around our city that don't get down so far? Might as well throw that out there. I mean, we're, you know, talking about things.
Councilmember Campbell, that's, that's a great thought. We actually, we, we recognize that there's a need to expand library services, and that is one of the things on our, in terms of our few-year plan, is looking to see how do we expand services in, in South Goodyear? Is that a branch? Is that a branch with limited access or limited hours of operation? Is it a mobile? We, we just haven't identified exactly what that is, but I would think we're probably about a good one, one to two years away from, from bringing that, bringing something before you.
Well, I certain, that was, something I grew up with, was the bookmobile at the grocery store, so, you know, I, I still think that that's a, a good thing to have. All right, thank you.
I suppose the cost is a little bit different, because transportation costs, so, and whatever we would use would cost us, so that, I think the idea, I think the idea is great, don't get me wrong.
Great idea.
Absolutely. I don't know if we had any buses or, or anything around that we could transition into that, but it's a good idea. Councilman Campbell.
Yes, I would like to share with council that the programs that they have at the library are generated by library staff, and the Friends of the Library will supplement them by paying the money for Mother Goose to come and do stories, for the Teen Leadership Council, when they have How to Be a Wizard all day, and pay for things like that, and we got them a DVD player, that's how we support them. A week ago, I was in on a Monday evening, I think, when we didn't have council, and I went to the back because it was just packed, our community room, and it was a teen driving class that AAA gives every six months at our library, and it was standing room only. So they do a tremendous amount of outreach to our community. So they do a tremendous amount of outreach to our community. We have baby time for moms to bring their babies, and friends of the library bought carpet squares so that the babies could sit on their colored carpets, but they really do a wonderful service. I would like someday for us to have our own library, just because that's what I grew up with, was a city library, and I don't know how we go about doing it, and our library still is tiny. We're grateful we have 10,000 square feet, but we really would love to have 30,000 or 40,000, 50,000 square foot library someday, and hopefully we'll be successful in doing that. The friends of the library have folks who are in the library three and four days a week volunteering, and they do a tremendous amount of, of selling used books. We have a, a section in the library in the corner where books are donated to us, and it's an honor system, and they're 25.50 and 75 cents each, and that's how we raise our money. And we've been very successful in making a partnership with the Phoenix Friends of the Library, who will take all of the books that we don't sell or that we get donated to us, and they will sell them online for Friends of Goodyear Library, and give us 50% of the proceeds. And it costs us nothing other than to get the books to them, and they sell them for us and then send us a check. And every penny we get goes into the Goodyear Library. That's all we spend it for. And we'll pay for staff retreats if they need it, we'll pay for whatever is reasonable, and, and we'll try to work with them so that we know we have the money to cover whatever they need. And I just want to give a shout out to the friends who have, and Georgia was part, sorry, mayor, excuse me.
No, it's okay, you called me Georgia.
Friendly, sorry.
That was my given name.
The mayor was in one of the beginning groups, where we just meant to talk about putting a friends group together, and we're very happy that it's still going strong, and, and we're doing very well. And we want to thank the city for letting us do what we do. And we sell wonderful library books, I mean, sorry, bags, library book bags for $3 each, and it's a mustache saying "My stash of books," and it's just a mustache on a bag, and things like that. So if you need a gift, go to our library and buy one of our bags for $3, and put it in a donation kitty for us. But thank you.
Welcome, Cheryl Lynn.
I thought it was very interesting how we, as a council, can read the material and come up with 180 different opinion of the statistic. Joanne said that she thought 28% was low. I thought it was high. I was very pleased with that number, and I mean, we're reading the same materials, and, and it's just our life experiences have just been different.
Good observation.
So I, I think that's very interesting. Do we know, Avondale has both of their libraries, and they're a comparable-sized city. Do we know what their experience is, or have you been around where they've been commenting on?
Yeah, we, we did have some communication and several meetings with them in, in preparing tonight's presentation through our research. They're pleased with their library services. I will tell you, in terms of their e-services, they are, I think they only had, from what we could tell, access to about 6,000 e-materials, where we have 50 million, 50 million approximately. One of the biggest things they saw when they shifted to an Avondale library was a, a loss in technology and keeping up with materials. That was the, their, their primary impact.
And, and I would think that would be a very serious consideration on our part when we're making this decision, because that's what traditionally, if there is a tradition, as fast as things are changing in the world, but that's what libraries are, are for. So I would think that would be a, a serious consideration in our thought processes.
Before I let it go for our second round, I'd like to have an opinion here. So Molly mentioned she'd like a 50,000 square foot library. So what I'd like, somebody review what the state statute changed on impact fees for libraries. As I so remember, I think it's.
I believe it's less than 10,000 square feet.
10,000.
Which is why we have a library that's 900 and.
So if you looked at some of those other ones, they were over 10,000. Well, that's no longer in the, in our plan. So when we think of this, we need to think within that guidelines, it's 10,000. So we have a library that is that, and so what would it take for the next 10,000? It would take a number of impact, and that would really be delayed for another area because we haven't built this one to use the impact fees for. So that was my only question, so I'll think back to council. Councilwoman Stipp.
You know, that's, that's a very good point, and I was kind of thinking that, in that same direction. Does, does our general plan contemplate a second standing library in the city?
The second library location is projected to come with city center and be part of that, that complex there, and I believe it was, there were plans for 30,000 square foot space with that.
So we have more space now, see?
So realistically, is there another location for 10,000 square feet contemplated in the plan?
We don't have that identified in, in our 10-year CIP, no.
Okay, so, and then, just, you know, it, it's interesting, I neglected, obviously, we have a great relationship with the library district, and I'm so thankful for that, for that relationship and what we've done so far, and I didn't say that earlier. You know, we've talked about what was it like when I was a kid and where things were at. The irony is, I think it depends on where you grew up. In the community that I grew up in, which when I was growing up was about 70,000 people, you know, suburb of Chicago, we had a library district. So it was separately funded, much like, I think, the county, you know, obviously the county pays for this one, but I think it afforded our local library system to operate much differently than we're able to do so as a city function. And this is one of those things we talk about, intergovernmental relations and letting someone else do the work that we should be providing. So this is a great example of that, and certainly the expertise, and that, and, and I think your example of 6,000 electronic pieces compared to 15 million tells the whole, that in and of itself tells the whole story. And it, it was funny, as this item came up, I, as I was reading it, I thought, geez, you know, when we first started talking about this five or six years ago, the wave was the library is going to die. And I, and I thought it was ironic, as I was reading the numbers, that not only has it not died, at least at this location, but we've, it, it's really, you know, accelerated and, and really grown from there. So I, I think maybe we need to be thinking about that paradigm being that relationship in support of, of someone who can actually provide it with a huge pile of resources that we can contribute to. So, thanks for the, the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Stipp. I do that every time. Councilwoman Basillo.
It's one of the dark long hair.
I know, I know him as the boys. So I see girls, I know him as the boys, and that's how I do that.
To me, if you've got a highly functioning.
Yeah, I do.
Operation like the county, and again, thank you very much, that is taking that little seed to where it is today on the number of visitors and the number of usage, to me it doesn't make any sense, especially if it's cheaper to change. So I'm sure this will continue to grow and grow and grow. And, and again, I didn't mention earlier, but thank the county, and we appreciate everything you've done, because I remember was just in that little room right over to the other city hall there.
Right, you were absolutely right.
And, you know, like, like Councilmember Stipp had mentioned, the indication is, eh, people are on their computers all day long, they're not going to go to a library. Wrong. They go there quite readily and, and use the material. Just to mention another option though, Mayor, as you talk about the 10,000 square feet, we can always talk to our great legislators, see if they want to boost it up to maybe 20 or 30. That is an option. I don't know if we'll get anywhere, but that is an option.
Are you assigning me that?
Yes.
Yes, curious. Any other comments? Well, I want to thank you for all your service, and, you know, as you start to talk about libraries, when I was growing up, we went to the library because none of us had encyclopedias. And so when we had to do our reports, the library was important. We didn't have internet. We didn't have anybody, you have to remember. You couldn't get any information unless you went to a, a library. So when the internet came in and all that technology, people thought, well, they don't need it, and this is just great proof that they do need it. People need a gathering place, they need to be somewhere, they have something in common with somebody, and they have a room full of interesting things to talk about and to read, and classes to take, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, now, Mayor, I believe.
One more, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Cheryl Lynn Holm.
Just want to compliment, our library, what are we, what are you? It's parks and recreation.
I'm sorry.
And, and anyway, what, what, I just think it's wonderful, what we have done to make it a community gathering place, witness the art.
True.
The opportunity to encourage our young artists and, and hang it in the library. I just think that, that, that the partnership there is, is tremendous, and a real congratulations to the, the, our employees that put that together and make it happen. It's so enjoyable, and the kids are excited about it, and we didn't have that before, so I really, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Definitely, the, the library is our hub. Mayor, I feel like we do have consensus to proceed with option one. One of the things that we have heard both from users, and I believe council has expressed interest in looking at potentially Sunday hours of operation. Currently, the library is open 48 hours a week, Monday through Wednesday, 10 to 7; Thursday through Saturday, 10 to 5, but it's not open on Sunday. And we had asked the county to look at what the cost impact would be for opening up possibly a five hours on a Sunday, and the early estimate we received was $10,000 annually to have library services on a Sunday. And so, you know, if we're looking at this number here, 774,200, is there interest in us looking at Sunday hours with the county for an additional, you know, 10 to 15,000 when we bring that contract before you?
Let me see what the, Molly?
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea, because I really would, would have loved my library to be open from 10:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night, so that the folks working could get to the library after work, but since they close at 7:00, if you work downtown Phoenix, you're lucky if you even hit Goodyear by 7:00. So you've only got Saturday to get to the library with your kids, and I think a Sunday, if it's reasonable, would be really very nice to do. I know Litchfield is open until 9:00 on certain nights, and, and a lot of folks do go over there, but I'd like to.
We would be looking at possibly a 1 to 5 on Sunday.
Oh, I think that's.
To allow family time and church time on Sundays, and then.
And for that, it, it works.
Carrie?
Well, I stole my thunder, that's exactly what I would.
I'm sorry.
No, that's exactly what I was thinking. I'm a working mom, I get home, by the time I get home, get up to Estrella, there's no way I'm getting back down by 7:00 to actually do anything meaningful. So not only would I like Sunday hours, but as we progress with this, I, I agree, evening hours on a couple nights a week would be absolutely wonderful for the working parents who have kids and want to be able to take them to the library. I, I think that would be, as we expand, maybe that would be the next step. But I'm, great idea.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Osborn.
I wonder if that would be a, a good survey question to ask in the next, you know, years to come? Is, is it more important to do both, you know, a, a couple of nights and a Sunday? Or does one weigh heavier than the other? You know, I, I would be interested to see just which was more important to people.
Is that the period of time that you're willing to wait for that to happen?
Well, not necessarily. I'm just saying, that would be an interesting thing to be able to, you know, kind of survey to see what was.
I will tell you that the, the Sunday, I think there's two other locations that Maricopa County operates on Sundays, and Sundays are, are pretty popular, from what I understand.
Good. Any other comments? Thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you.
You offered all the correct information, and you got us very excited, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're down now to item 3.2, is an update on, of the progress of the ambulance service certificate of necessity, or known to us as the CON, application process and financial review. We have with us Fire Chief Paul Louizzi and Lauren Wigan-Roff, and we also have Budget Manager Doug Sandstrom, Finance Director. Go ahead, you're on.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Doug Sandstrom and I will review the, the previous work sessions that we've talked about, and then also kind of bring it up to speed on where we're at with our CON application. Okay, so previously in the work session in May 2015, we reviewed an ambulance feasibility study that we had done with the consultants. The CON, as a reminder, is a fully regulated ambulance industry. The Bureau of EMS regulates the ambulance services throughout the state. Currently, within the city of Goodyear, there are two vendors which hold CON authorization to operating in Goodyear, and that's AMR, or Southwest Ambulance, as they were previously known, and now the newest one, Maricopa Priority Ambulance. There is a third application that's currently in for review, and that's with Falk Ambulance, and they are a European company that has now extended into the United States over the last five years. They've purchased quite a few companies on the East Coast, and now, most recently, have a pretty good-sized footprint in San Diego area, and are now moving into Arizona. By owning and operating our own ambulance, we provide quality assurance and continuity of care for our citizens. The 2015 ambulance feasibility study did recommend using a four ambulance as our deployment model, and the units are dedicated to the area, and it creates more of an adaptive emergency medical service delivery system to our citizens. Currently, the city receives the following financial benefit from the current contract that we have with Southwest Ambulance, or American Medical Response, or AMR, and that's kind of leaving it at a status quo, which is $125,000. We receive this funding anytime one of our medics rides into the hospital with a critical patient, and so that, on average, is what we've been pulling in each year through that, that contractual obligation. And then financially, the next steps to complete in the evaluation, obviously, CIPs and supplementals were submitted into the, the finance in December. January and February, the Budget and City Manager's Office review that process, and then March and April, obviously, there'll be city council discussion, and then resource allocation after that. Previously, we had talked to you about what it takes to complete the application, and we had said about four to six months, from what we have been hearing from some of our peers. And a, a big thanks goes out to Battalion Chief Russ Braden for all the work he's done on completing this application. And currently, where we're at right now, according to our consultants, is we're about 90 cent, 90% complete with our application. So we've submitted the entire application into the consultants, along with Doug and Lori's work on the financials, and that they are currently reviewing those. So as you can see, we've done a bulk of the work, which previously we thought would take around six months, and I think a lot of hard work and diligence to get this done, was able to bring that in well under the, the expected due date for us. Once you do submit the applications to the state, there is an administrative process that then occurs. First is an administrative review, and so they'll glance at the application for you and look for anything that's outstanding. Typically, cities average about five to 10 questions that they receive back, and the cursory review, and you make those adjustments or answer those questions, and then it's on for the full review. Now, there's two different formats that can happen at this point, so we could have a contested CON hearing, which could extend out the application process for up to two years, and that's more worst-case scenario. However, there is a large legal bill that goes along with that. We would have to hire an outside attorney that is, specializes in CON reviews and hearings, and, and talking with them, right now, we, we know that bill would be around $450,000, and that's for legal consulting and registration fees. For a non-contested CON, you're looking anywhere from six to 18 months following the submission of the application and the review, and you're still looking at some legal consulting fees that would be mixed in there, and we're estimating that to be approximately $100,000, $150,000 that it would cost. And again, depending on how. And again, depending on how our current holders are and how they react to our application would really decide whether we go down the contested route or down the non-contested route. Ambulance rates within our state are regulated by the Bureau of VMS. We don't have much influence on that whatsoever. We can ask for review of those rates. You can either ask for it as a pool or a group of, of providers or you can go in as a single provider and ask for that, for that rate change. The current insurance payer mix in the city of Goodyear is very strong in comparison to the other cities in the metro Phoenix area. And that, that was something that was told to us by our consultants as they reviewed the, the financials for, for our city. Medicare and Access do have fixed rates on their reimbursements. Medicare currently is a fixed rate and Access currently pays at 68.59% of the state approved rate. So on a $100 ambulance transport, not that we ever have one of those, but on a $100 ambulance transport, you would be billed at 68 bucks is all that you can collect from Access. And the financial modeling did look at the last five years to help develop the accurate trend and call volume and that was more from the, from the consultants. In, in, in the, the consultant's work, they did look at phasing in the ambulances over the next four fiscal years as a way to approach it. Certainly, this is one way to approach it. There could be other ways that we can talk to you about, about staggering that approach. But for this model tonight, what we consider is phasing them in over the, the next four fiscal years. Of course, this only happens after the approval of the CON. Right now, we're looking at 1 24-hour ambulance in the first fiscal year and then additional deployments annually after that. So the phasing would go 1 24-hour ambulance, 1 12-hour ambulance, 1 24-hour ambulance and 1 12. And you can mix those and change those however it kind of fits our needs. The ambulances would be staffed by civilian employees. And we'd also have a civilian EMS coordinator, a mechanic and a contract monitor or an EMS billing specialist. We're, we're calling it for this purpose tonight, a contract monitor, but really it's an EMS billing specialist that would ensure that prior to the EMS run reports, prior to them going to the billing agency, that they are in the proper format and they weren't missing anything. So it's more of a quality assurance piece, but also to kind of continue to monitor anything that we have going on regulatory wise. The models tonight that you'll see are based on the consultant's report, city practices and information really gathered from other agencies that have gone through the CON application. More specifically, we looked a lot at Surprise and Peoria. They were the most recently that had gone through it. Major assumptions here tonight are the level of bad debt and also the employee rate of pay. An annual general fund subsidy of about $425,000 to $844,000, depending on how the model is, is structured. We'll show the, the first slide on Elmo. I'll turn this part over to Doug to go through with you.
Can you make it any bigger? Sorry.
Maybe we should turn around.
Side button will focus it.
What I've, what I've shown up here is a comparison. This was included in your packets and I'll walk through this. What the first step we did was we're looking at the full operational model. So Chief Luizzi talked about phasing in over four years. This is what it would look like at the end of the four years because that's how the consultant's report laid it out was for that full package. And what we started to do is just walk through and compare the consultant's report to our lowest cost estimate and then what we would consider our anticipated cost. Overall, all three of them have six ambulances, four frontline, two 24-hours, two 12-hours and then two reserve ambulances when we're fully operational. Position count wise, in the consultant's report, there was a total of 19 full-time equivalent positions, 18 of those ambulances with an EMS coordinator and no contract monitor or administrative assistant or mechanic. In both of our estimates, we have included both a contract monitor and a mechanic based on discussions with Peoria in the city of Surprise. They both said you have to have a contract monitor in there to stay on top of the billing contractor to make sure that we're not just getting the easy bills paid, but we're really doing good on the collections. And then the mechanic with our fleet services, that as soon as there are two plus ambulance, more than two ambulances in service, we would need to add a mechanic into the mix. So taking that information and when we go down to the costing, it almost fits. We look at the operational portion of it. The wages, salaries, the consultant report lumped them all together. So it didn't distinguish ambulance versus support personnel. We've broken them out, but you can see between the mid-range and the anticipated, we're between, anywhere between $100,000 to $350,000 higher than what was in the consultant report. The main reasons for that are the increased numbers of FTEs, costing out healthcare benefits the way the city actually does pay for healthcare benefits as opposed to just a percentage of a person's earnings. And then budgeting the positions at midpoint or market value as opposed to the very start of the range. The consultant's report had all of the positions in varying from $12 an hour up to $16 an hour by using the midpoint that goes from $16 an hour to $20 an hour for a start. The other factor that was not built in on the personnel costs in the consultant report was backfill for holidays in vacation time. As a 24-hour operation, you always have to have it staffed. So whenever there are holiday pay, vacation time, sick time, you have to backfill those positions in. So that's where the personnel differences come into play on our model versus that consulting model. O and M, you can see across the board, they're relatively close from the consultant report to the low to the anticipated with the big change being on this vehicle and equipment asset management, basically putting together the asset management replacement of the ambulances and the equipment that go into it. The consultant report had a 10-year life on the ambulances and had the ambulances costed out at $200,000. When you factor in all the outfit that goes along with each ambulance, they run closer to $300,000. And then our lifecycle is five years as opposed to 10 years. In discussions with both Surprise and Peoria, Surprise is at seven years and I do not know off the top of my head what Peoria is, so it's much less than that 10-year timeframe. Revenue wise, overall, our total gross revenue is relatively the same. We did update the model for the low and the anticipated to reflect current rates of Southwest ambulance or AMR ambulance. Two items that were, one item that was not factored into the consultant report is that existing transport revenue of $125,000 annually that the chief talked about. So we back that out. And then bad debt. The consultant report put it at 26% to do a little bit more conservatism. We jumped that up to 30% because it is in business that we're just getting into, not familiar with, making sure that we got that covered. Discussions with both Surprise and Peoria, they're brand new into the system and they're still getting a handle on what that revenue looks like. At the end of the day, what we look at for that fully built out system then is a range of a general fund subsidy from $80,000 from the consultant report up to about $400,000 based on that low end on the cost of employees. And bad debt, all the way up to approximately $844,000 based on those two assumptions. So that's the range of the cost on an ongoing annual basis that we would be looking at based on the calls for service called out on the consultant report. Then in addition to that, we have the one-time cost comparison. In the consultant report, you can see that we had the ambulance purchases, six of them at $1.2 million and then a new service revenue delay. And what that is, is when you start the service in July, you start incurring expenses and billing, but you really don't start to get money collected on those billings until three to six months into the system. So we have a one-time cost to cover that operations for those first few months while we're getting billing up and running. In the low and medium estimated, the costs are the same from the city side. We did build in that outfit cost of an ambulance, so it's $200,000 for the ambulance plus the outfit, the communication equipment to make sure that it can actually be called out and operate within our dispatch system. Training and furnishing for all the new employees that would be hired. The revenue delay then is based on information that we've gotten from the city of Surprise mainly on how their revenue started to come in, cycling it up over a three-month, six-month and nine-month. And then we've added in the legal consulting registration costs of the $450,000 to come up with the numbers that you see before you. So that's the overview of the entire operational system. From a phasing perspective. Pull up. From a phasing perspective, one of the options that we looked at, this is the mathematics and the modeling behind it are going to be all the same with the only changes being the minimum wage assumption and the bad debt assumption. So up here, we have that middle column that we just looked at and you can see the phasing of a 24 ambulance, hour ambulance in year one with a reserve, adding a 12-hour ambulance in year two, 24-hour ambulance in year three, and then being fully staffed and operational in year four. Ramp up the position counts from eight in the first year. When we add that third ambulance overall, we add a mechanic. On the operational side, vehicle O and M then drops because here we're outsourcing some of the stuff. We're going to be able to start bringing in-house when we have that full-time mechanic. And then it walks all the way across with the revenue based on that phased-in approach. When we look at that phased-in approach, bringing just that 1 24-hour ambulance on in year one, we have a operating deficit of about $252,000. The next year, it goes up to 325, drops slightly in year three and then comes back up in year four. And that's the way we would look on an ongoing basis, moving forward with billing increases, number of calls increasing and we'd go from there and start slowly chipping away at that deficit under this assumption. Annual costs on the 24-hour model, if we were to just do that 1 24-hour ambulance year one, we would have about $1.6 million in one-time costs associated with entering into the ambulance business and that includes the purchase of two ambulances, the outfit, the equipment, training and furnishing of those staff, the revenue delay for what the amount of revenue under that would be, and then the application cost legal assuming a contested service. And then one final, and again, I do, do have this with the midpoint and 30% assumption, but again, it's the same kind of cost and walks through and the model looks the same. And then one final item that we looked at in doing the financial modeling was the possibility of bringing on a 24-hour ambulance and then another 24-hour ambulance in some future year after that. And the one thing on this model that we have to keep in mind is if we were to go forward with a contested CON, practically speaking, we would have to go forward with the entire operational service. We wouldn't be able to phase it in if it was a contested CON. So assuming it was not a contested CON and we went forward with a 20, two 24-hour ambulances in the first year, one in the first year, one in some second year. What we would be looking at is eight full-time equivalent positions in the first year. And again, that operational loss of about $252,000 when we use those minimum assumptions, growing to $269,000. So just a slight increase in the loss when we added that second 24-hour ambulance into it. But at the end of the day, what we would be looking at is an operating subsidy from the general fund of about $250,000 to $450,000 for a 24-hour ambulance. And that was a lot of information, so I'll open it up for any questions at this point. Or do we finish first?
We have a few, do you want, I have a few more slides to go through and then we can open it up for questions.
Do you think that would help for them to see the slide, the filing? Okay, go ahead.
So certainly there is always that option of maintaining the status quo. Our current contract with rural metro Southwest Ambulance AMR now, it will continue to pay us on the fiscal year, average over the last two years, $125,000 for that, that ride-in fee. In the event of an emergency, we still do have that agreement with Buckeye Valley Fire Department or Fire District. So if, if in the event, something happened emergently to the system, that we would be able to respond within a few hours to get an ambulance up and be able to provide transportation. We would submit our request to the state for an emergency CON, which, talking with the deputy director, could be granted over the phone. So something that, and we always have that, that option to be able to still continue to provide that service to our citizens. Our current state, when we're working with AMR, over the last three months, here is their code three on-scene compliance, which is 90% compliance. This is a part of their CON with part of the statute that they have to respond within 10 minutes, 90% of the time. And so you can see they're, they're meeting that goal there or exceeding that goal slightly. So, you know, they continue to be a good partner to, to work with. And then on the right-hand side is the number of total transports they've been doing from the system to, to the hospitals, so, over the last three, three months. And this is a look at the fire departments that have recently taken on the CON process and the amount of time that it's actually taken them to obtain their CON. So you have anywhere from Surprise, which is around six months in Mesa, about six months upwards to Tempe and Yuma, who had to go through a full process in a contested here, or nearly a contested hearing in Tempe's case, but a full contested hearing in Yuma's case, which took them about two years. Certainly, you know, we always, we have those options that are out there for consideration in the discussion tonight. You know, certainly moving forward with the CON and submitting that in February. Also to conclude, this is part of the budget discussion for council consideration. Look for other partnerships with other cities. However, I will tell you that each city does have to have their own CON. So that partnership is, is almost in words at times, but each city would have to require getting their own CON or acquiring their own CON. I will tell you that Avondale is, has this on consideration the end of February. They are moving, hopefully moving forward their application for a CON. So that is something that's of a more recent development, but something they've been working on for a little bit, but finally are sitting down with council to talk with them about that final step at the end of February. Or continue to look for partnerships in our current or future transport providers. Like I said, we do have two providers right now that do have CON, you know, holdings within the city of Goodyear and could be a future transport provider for us. But in this scenario, the city would not own its own CON. So obviously we're going to talk now and have lots of questions from you guys, hopefully answer all of them.
I sense a quietness. So who would like to start? Councilman Holman?
Well, I was delighted to see the number two. My, my main concern, as we have talked about this, is the, the lack of substantive information whether cities have had. I haven't seen whether in the, like, what was the loss to Surprise their first year?
They, they have just completed their first year, so I think they're still getting all their financials together. Peoria just started last Monday, so we won't see their, their numbers, their true numbers for, for quite some time.
I think that's, would be very important to see as we make a decision. And the other thing is, as we reflect over the last few months, we have approved expenses that exceeded what our budget and we're getting it from other sources to, to make. But I, I, this is probably more story than you'd like to hear, but a lot of CEOs in the chamber business lost their job because they would go to their board when they were building a building, one additional expense at a time and nobody had the full picture of what that was doing to the actual budget. And that's kind of what I see happening to us. I would. I would really like to see us to be included as part of our budget discussions so that we can see how all of these things that we've been doing are impacting the budget for the next fiscal year, rather than jump into it and then realizing that, that we're going to have to reverse maybe some of our decisions that we thought were important because there just weren't enough funds to stretch that far. That's been one of my big concerns, so that, that's, I'm glad to see that option on there for us, because I think that could be, that that's just good business.
Thank you. Councilman Basillo.
All right. Couple things on the finances. One thing where you talk about the mechanic after you get a few cars, don't we have mechanics in-house here?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
So we're going to have to hire another mechanic because you have two ambulances?
Correct. When we spoke with Fleet Services, they said after we got, we could get the frontline in the reserve without hiring an additional mechanic, but as soon as we got that third one in, we would need another mechanic.
All right, it just, I don't know, for some reason, it's just not clicking with me, needing another mechanic for the, for the vehicles. The other piece that I have here is a vehicle and equipment asset management, 122,000 for one vehicle and a reserve. What's that, a five, what are you depreciating these over, five years?
Five years.
So that's over 600,000 for two vehicles and equipment?
Correct. It's about 300,000.
That's what it costs per vehicle?
Correct.
Okay. What's the other O and M?
Exactly what it says, other O and M.
I know, but...
Utilities, supplies, just your basic cost of doing business and the operations.
You haven't allocated any overhead for city management, high-level management staff or anything like that?
It says no overhead allocated to it, and it also does not have any, any direct allocation of battalion chiefs, the chief, assistant chief, that is, none of that is included in this.
Okay. I guess one of my question, question is, is, you know, and find it interesting at the consultant's report, and ours is about 500% off on the low end. So I don't know who the consultant was, but it just seems like quite a spread there. You know, I mean, you, you see 50, 60, 30, what, 500? And then on the high end, it's almost 1,000% when we saw what they initially proposed. And I know you went through line by line on what those differences were, but to me, that seems like a very large discrepancy from my perspective. I don't know if we just don't hire that accountant again, or, or what, only because that's, to me, it's huge, okay? As far as putting this CON in, you're saying, once we put it in, if it's contested, we cannot, if I understood you correctly, we cannot take this out the four years or whatever the case may be?
So the discussions with the CON manager last week that I had with him, so I asked him, if we submit a CON and we want to make changes after the application and it's been accepted, and we've been granted the CON, however the process goes, could we make changes? And he said, we're going to hold you to what you submit, knowing that you understand in your city and your finances, and whatever is in the application, we're going to hold you to that plan. However, they do understand that, that financial needs, changes, implications come up in that we have to, you know, make changes with them. Their biggest concern is, how is the system being covered at that point in time? What is going to happen? Is, is AMR going to pick up where you can't put units into place? Would somebody else come in contractually and be able to pick up that, that, that opening or that gap that's created by you not putting up another ambulance? So, so the answer is, they would hold us to the application, but there's certainly discussions that could be had and amendments that could be made to the contract or the application itself.
So we could still allocate it over a four-year period of time if we so choose? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yeah. So if we wanted to phase it in every other year or every third year, phase in a new ambulance, yes, that's, that's certainly something we can do. How, and, but I will just say one, one thing, Councilmember Basillo, is just, we really want to understand what that looks like. I mean, the models that we showed you tonight kind of show a very succinct, consistent approach where we're going to put in four ambulances over four years. One of the things that we've been looking at most recently is, in the ambulance industry, they look at time on task or unit hour utilization. And currently, the ambulances in our system are on the very low capacity side, so, you know, they would range that anywhere from .17 to .25, would be on the lower capacity range, where .5 or half would be the optimal range. And so we have plenty of capacity within the ambulance, their ability to be able to do work. So we could almost add almost three times more volume into those systems to kind of get them into that optimal or a little bit above the optimal range. So I, I think it would be prudent for us to continue to look at this and maybe even space it out a little bit more, knowing that the, the current demand or the current utilization of one unit is, is very low. So how, how much can you space it out? What would be the growth over those years so that we have a better understanding of when the phase-in model would occur?
So if I understand you correctly, just, just to be sure, and because that's where I was kind of going, could you make it five, make it six, whatever, to spread it out because of utilization?
Yeah.
Which would bring those individual bottom-line costs to get there. Now, you also mentioned FALK had just, is it FALK, F-A-U-L-K?
Yep.
Does that sound right? They had just recently submitted a CON.
Correct.
You already have two in, and then now they're in the, the loop.
Correct.
So as we sit here on the sidelines supposedly, and if we wait, somebody else could be jumping in that loop as well, and then is there a point in time where it becomes, and again, it's not my industry, so I defer to you, a, they become, the capacity becomes...
Oversaturated.
Oversaturated, I guess is the term I'm looking at. Again, you tell me, because I don't know.
You know, I, I think that it's hard to speculate on that. You don't know how the director of DHS is going to rule on that. We would want to construct the most concise application that we can to kind of, you know, make sure that we're delivering the right message and the strongest application to them to be able to approve it. We obviously would want them to approve that. I think they certainly look at the governments as being in the forever business and, and being around, because certainly, the, you know, at any point in time, and we've seen this across the country, that the private ambulance company can just pack up one day and, and off they go. They don't have that, 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 you know, local, homegrown need to stay, stay in the area all the time. They, they have to answer to stockholders. We have to answer to, to the citizens here. So it, it's hard to speculate on how the directors would, would rule, but we would want to submit the strongest application that we could. And, you know, you're, you're right, I mean, there's always vendors out there that are looking to get into the business, so.
The question, a couple more here. We're in the community, we, we've got the grant for the community paramedic medicine.
Yeah.
Okay. It almost seems to me, if we're going to stay in that business, it's almost a natural flow between the two. You know, the ambulance, the transport, and then follow-up on those patients, that you're now actively have got a grant to follow up to try to reduce those calls to the, to the hospital. I'm trying to envision, and again, I defer to you only because this is not my specialty, is how would that impact the community paramedic medicine if we choose not to go down this road? And would that, and would that, I guess, in essence, negate the need to do the community paramedic medicine?
No. In, in my opinion, no. I, I think the, the need is still out there for healthcare resources in the community. And, you know, in the, in the first few months that we are seeing patients, that is the one thing that we're seeing, is the gap in the, just from patient being discharged to going home, that healthcare gap does exist. And so we're trying to fill that hole in those patients as opposed to them going back to the emergency department for their care, trying to fill that gap in the, in that resource so that they have the most appropriate resource for them other than the 911 system. So while, while there is correlations there within the, the work itself, the, the strong correlation between the application itself and, and our pilot project, there's, there's, it's not as strong.
One last. I'm almost done, just one last. Follow-up on Councilmember Holman. You know, I had a discussion with the city manager today on my one-on-one, and I had made a suggestion from a budget standpoint, and I'm glad you're here, Doug, is, I think it would be very helpful on an executive summary, a chart, even if it's one for both the general fund and the operating and the general fund, one time is to show what's new money, what are all the competing factions against that money, and when it's all said and done, what's left. I suspect your number will be a negative number when you put them all up there, but it would be nice to be able to see that in a comprehensive picture so we know what resources are fighting for what. We talked about the library today. You know there's 370-something there if you move forward with the library. You've got the second phase of the police squad, that's another half a million or whatever it is. So you've got those on the table, you've got a lot of stuff already committed, you know, on the one time, you have your reserve fund that's going to be funded if you so choose to keep. So it would be nice to see all those pieces, to know in a comprehensive manner what you have. But my biggest concern is, I hate to see us fall too far behind as we get through this. I'd like to see what we have on there, and I'll defer for who's next.
Councilman LaRochelle. Vice Mayor LaRochelle.
I have to put my thing back up, it went away. Chief, I want to thank you for all your hard work and everyone's hard work on this. I think you hit it right on the tone when you said, we're in the forever business.
Yeah.
That, that pretty much speaks what we do. I have a couple of questions, because I just want to clarify with the CON, some of like the rules of the road, shall, shall we say?
Sure.
When we get our CON...
Yeah.
Let's say we get it for whatever we put in, and our population booms, how do we change it, or what do we do to say, oh, yeah, we put in for four ambulances, but now we've got all the way back to Mobile, we need six or eight, whatever? How do we do that?
Sure, so we can go back to the state and show through our data collection the need for the, for the ambulances. And typically, they will look at that unit hour utilization or the capacity in the ambulances, and you can show easily that, hey, we're starting to creep towards that, that optimal or above-optimal level, so we need to start adding, you know, additional ambulances to offload some of that work. So I think it's a very easy argument, and in fact, talking with Peoria today, there's some discussion about them possibly moving up some of their later ambulances a little bit earlier, you know, based on a week of work, but, you know, some of their understanding of their own system and what they kind of envision for the future is that the potential need for that ambulance a little bit faster. I think Surprise, from what we've heard from them, they're right on their schedule, they're adding their second unit next month, February, and that's almost a year and a couple months after they added their first unit. So they're right on their schedule, adding units as they, they can. So the answer to your question is yes, and it's to go back to the bureau and make that addendum change with them.
But it's an addendum, it's not a whole nother process.
Correct.
We don't have to go back through and get contested. Once we're in...
That's correct.
We're in, and we can modify. Now, can we modify it the other way? Let's say we have another 2006, and we said, we want four ambulances every year, and something comes down the pike and just building freezes, I mean, everything stops, unfortunately.
Yeah, it kind of goes back to my answer a little bit earlier when I talked to the CON manager. He, they said they would hold us to the application, but they do understand financial implications that cities or even private industries encounter, but they would want to know how is that gap being protected.
Okay. And we would still have the current ambulance service as backup till we got up to speed?
Yeah, they would want us to be, you know, contractually connected with them.
So, so that would be an agreement that they've done with other cities, I assume, if Peoria has one.
Yeah.
And Peoria's got 160,000 people, I'm sure they, they got some backup, so...
Yes, yes, yes. You have to have that as part of the application.
So our residents would be covered?
Yes, absolutely.
If they're hearing this discussion and we're talking about one ambulance, that's not going to leave anybody uncovered.
No, we would still need to maintain the system and through that, through either mutual aid or contractual agreements, yes.
And so we have one, what you're proposing or recommending would be one ambulance a year, but that wouldn't start until we basically got our CON, right?
Correct. And, and so we were estimating that the potential start date would be the start of fiscal year 18, right? Oh, 19, sorry, got the wrong year, 19, which would be July of 2018.
Okay, so maybe Doug could help me with that. So that would be in the next budget, actually, wouldn't be in this budget here.
Correct. This budget here, we would start doing the ramping up of it, buying the capital, one-time costs, and hiring the employees so that they're ready to go on July 1. So we'd have a portion of the cost this fiscal year, this coming up fiscal year, with the full op, on operation the following fiscal year.
The next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then if we're doing the, my last question, if we're doing the six ambulances for the backup, so that's six years, or can we say one every four years, so we get the four, and then do 16 months for the backup? Is that something we can do, spread the backups out?
The idea is to have a backup now, so the event, the primary ambulance breaks down, you had something to switch into. Again, we still needed to kind of maintain that service. So it's kind of, you know, almost a two-to-one variable, so as you add two primary ambulances, you do have one reserve to be able to switch.
So for every two, there's one backup?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, 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 I agree with, with, I think what, what Joe is saying is, especially if Avondale's going to drop, I don't want to be the last person to drop the application. It sounds like there's enough flexibility here that we could work with it, and we can work within our, our budget, because there, if it's a contested, if it goes two years, then we really know we got time. If it's not contested, we still know we're up to almost over a year before we're really going to have to go there. And if we keep delay, 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 and, and wait for more facts and figures, I understand that it'd be nice to have, but we're not going to, Peoria's not going to have facts and figures for a year, Surprise isn't going to have them for a year. So, and then if healthcare changes, do we wait another year? It, it just seems like we just delay, 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 it will never get done. So I'm for putting it in, I think my questions have been answered satisfactorily, and I think it's a good forever business plan.
Councilman Stipp.
Thanks, Chief. I want to go back to the application questions that Councilmember Basillo had. And I want to start there, so the C of N application...
Yes.
Is what you put in before you are granted the certificate, correct?
Correct, yes.
So we can file an application now, and we can withdraw that application at any time up to it being awarded.
Correct.
So if we put the application in today, for example, and tomorrow, we find out that AMR is going to contest it, and then we find out it's going to become a bloodbath, and it's going to drag out to $1 million in four years, we can just say, we're not going to do it.
Yes.
And nothing changes.
Correct.
So the only implication of the CON manager, the Department of Health Services, is once we have it, then we have to meet our commitment.
Yes, yeah. Once the CON is granted, yes, you are accurate.
Okay. So I, I think that's a very distinct, it's an important distinction that I think Councilmember Basillo, Basillo was trying to make, that we ended up getting, going around it. So I, I thought that was important to start there. I'm a little confused and concerned by the numbers, starting with the mechanic. So if we're, if Fleet Services is saying that for every two vehicles we add to our fleet, we have to have a mechanic, then how many mechanics did we add in this fiscal year based on the number of new police officers that we added?
What Fleet Services said is, if we added that second, third ambulance in, they would need it, because they've already got a certain level of capacity and workload for that first ambulance coming onboard, they're able to maintain and sustain that with existing staff. If you add over and above that, that's when it's going to have to add that additional mechanic, and you can see it's just one mechanic for the entire six ambulance setup.
So we, we don't have a mechanic to hire to take care of the entire fire fleet. We don't have a single mechanic to take care of the entire police fleet, and we don't have a single mechanic that takes care of the entire public works fleet, but we need a single mechanic to take care of six ambulances?
We, we need to add an, from the information we've gotten from Fleet, to after we had the two, they would need an ambulance, a mechanic added.
That's why I'm having, I mean, I, I use that as a crazy, outlandish example, but that just doesn't, I'm, I'm, I'm a real simple-minded person when it comes to that, so I think I made my point. Then the other thing is the, are these EMS physicians? I know the consultant's report suggested an EMS coordinator, which during the time of our discussion, I recall, now I could very well be wrong, that that person as the EMS coordinator was going to be monitoring the, the billing process to get through. Now, we've, in the updated numbers, have chosen to implement a contract monitor, a billing person, and a second EMS coordinator. Seems to be a pretty big departure from what the consultant recommended, and if the current EMS coordinator is going to be doing the same functions, just adding six new employees, that seems like a... six new employees, that seems like an overreach as well. Because we're not talking about adding an EMS coordinator when we put up a new fire station and we're adding 12 new people. So I guess I, philosophically, I don't need an answer unless you want to do it. Philosophically, I just question the need to institute the EMS coordinator position immediately, and perhaps that becomes something that occurs in year four and competes with the other budget priorities.
Sure.
So that, you know, for consideration, I guess. And again, that's just my opinion. So I guess I, at the end of the, at the end of this whole conversation, you know, we talked, and I alluded to it in the thing with the library, we have, this is a very extensive set, and there's four of them, plus the comparison chart. There are four of these pro formas that we, that we saw on this one service. We saw a single PowerPoint slide on the library, and the library will have an annual general fund loss of $774,000 a year. And we saw a single PowerPoint slide. And we've gone to a great extent to show losses with this that range from 250,000 on one chart to 400 and something on the other chart or eight something. So I'm a little, I'm trying to figure out why we went through, why we jumped through those hoops. But at the end of the day, I guess I would just look back and say, what's our police department budget? Like 19 million dollars roughly? PD, fire, you're like 16 million, something like that?
A less than that.
What's your revenue? What do you make, about a million bucks a year? So you're a $15 million loss. PD probably brings in about $4 million a year. So they're a $15 million loss. We don't, we don't question that. We don't question a $15 million loss on those public safety agencies. And we're talking about, about building a capacity in our community that is a, that is a critical component to the public health. And we're going to, we're going to shake about between 250 and 700,000. We're going to shake on that because we're not sure what we're going to do. So maybe we better see how it lays out. Trying to keep my passion under control.
Please do.
I'm not doing a good job so far.
Smile. Yeah, you are. Give one a smile and take a deep breath.
So, so, and I didn't really tirade, so I'm all right there. So at, at the end of the day, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is not a direct linkage between our continued participation in community paramedicine and putting this application in. I understand that. But there is a, tell me if this is wrong, there is a greater benefit to our community if we respond to their 911 call, continue to care for them, transport them to the facility. We have partnered with that facility to care for them, and then when they go home, we follow up with them. That's a better system than breaking that up. Is that not correct?
No, that's correct. The continuum of care is something that I'm very passionate about as well and would love to see. And I agree with you that that linkage, that full 360 view for the customer is very important.
So if we say we want to be in the community paramedicine business, then it only makes sense for us to get into the ambulance business so that we can close that loop. And if we can keep people from repeating visits at the hospital and we can care for them better, in essence, we will have a far healthier community. So if we all are in agreement with that, then I guess the real question is, do we do it now or do we wait? And the chief's, you know, description of the EMS process with the two current providers, a third applicant, and then we would become the fourth applicant, correct?
Yes.
And we don't know what the DHS director, at what point they're stopping, what they're, where they're blocked, where they're going to cut it off at.
Correct.
So if we wait, we could be on the other side of that. And now we have waited unnecessarily for a process that we can at any time pull our application should we decide to do that. So today, January 30th, if we to make a decision to push forward, we aren't costing anything until later on down the road. But if we wait, now we're going to hurt ourselves potentially later. Because I will ask you, before Rural Metro filed for bankruptcy, how many C of N holders were there in the county of Maricopa?
Just one.
Just one, just one, one and a half, because you had Buckeye Valley with one as well. So that, and they go into La Paz County and whatnot. So there was one, and anybody who made application was always denied. So it wasn't until Rural Metro's bankruptcy that the, that the CON process became opened, where everyone said, holy cow, this could happen at any moment. That's going to, that's going to stop. So we have, if we're going to, if we're serious about this, we have an obligation to do this now.
Thank you, Bill. Next?
My turn? No, okay. I'll wait. Okay.
Councilman Campbell.
All right. I have waited 11 years, Bill, for this night because I sat on the Public Safety Committee, and one of our recommendations was for our fire department to run our own ambulance. And we were so disappointed when we were told, but back in those days, there was not really the need to run our ambulances because it just wasn't. We never quite understood. But I'm delighted to see it's here. And I really think, in all sincerity, we need to drop the application in now to get in line and then see what happens. We can always pull it back. We can talk to them if we need to amend it. And as Councilmember Stipp said, it's a continuing of care, and you're right. You call 911, a paramedic shows up at your door, and it's a Goodyear Fire Department. And then they go to transport you, and it's somebody else. And then you worry, are they going to take care of you? Because that person necessarily isn't a paramedic driving that ambulance, and you're having a heart attack. But you do have a Goodyear Fire paramedic that rides in the ambulance with you to get you to the hospital. And they transfer the care, and then there you're there. You really want to stay with the fire department because that's who we trust, that's who we call, that's who answers our, our emergency call. It's just like if we called 911 and said, oh, I'm getting robbed, and they didn't send a policeman, they sent somebody else who works for somebody else, and you're saying, well, where's my Goodyear Police Department? And they're, you know, but I just, I just think it's really important. And you're right, Bill, years ago, we didn't have this issue because they weren't letting anyone do it. But we're in the forever business because we'll always have a fire department in this city. And we'll always have trained men and women who will respond to our calls for paramedics or EMT, whatever we need. But we can't always trust that a private ambulance company is going to be in business all the time. And we cannot wait till they start going out of business for us to pick up the pieces then. And like I said, we just need, we should have dropped this a long time ago, and we would still be in, in the queue waiting to see. It's six to 18 months to get approved. It's not going to happen overnight. We've got plenty of time to pull it back, look at the numbers. And you're absolutely right. We just spent 774,000 plus 10,000 if we open on Sundays and didn't blink an eye. So here we are. And the mechanics, I mean, if we buy brand-new ambulances, are they supposed to have to work on them? I mean, and why can't we keep them for 10 years? I keep my car for 10 years or more. Yeah. So I just think there's ways that we can make it work when we put the paper and the numbers together. I don't think we need to get, I just think we need to move ahead, and then we can always pull it back, Chief, because you said we could.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Osborn.
Thank you. Well, I, I am very passionate over this, and I, I really wanted to hear from my fellow council members before I spoke because I think it's very important that we've been discussing this for months, for a year, for more. And, and the fact is that it is a vision of this council that it is a continuum of care that we see this city have. And, and I'm, I'm very proud of that, that everybody's been on that same page, that we do care about our citizens and we want it to be the best throughout. Now, I will tell you, when this came out and I read this, I was very frustrated and disappointed. And I almost feel like, gosh, if we had to go out and look at this a third time, different numbers would come again. And I was, I was getting a bit upset about it because I thought we had vetted many things. However, we do need to continually look at the big picture, and I, and I understand those things change. But it was frustrating, and I just wanted to voice that. You know, I understand, Sherilyn, what you're talking about. We don't ever want to look at anything in a vacuum. You know, you want to look at the big picture because we have a lot of things, you know, priorities that we've been trying to discuss, some big things in the last, gosh, even last Monday night was, was pretty big. And, you know, and I even, I even told our city manager that the ambulance issue is not my number-one priority for our city. My number-one priority right now was fire stations, period. Then it was the connection to SRP because that's a lot of money. Now, it's a separate, you know, financial entity, but, but those are, when we go really down the priority list, you know, the ambulance system wasn't number one. However, continuum of care is number one for us in my eyes. And, and I can tell by what I'm hearing from, from others, it is to all of you too. And I, I think that's, that's very, very important. I do believe that there's consideration that needs to be thought about in this phasing. And, and I, and I think Councilmember Stipp kind of brought that up. I think you did too, Joe, a bit. I think that when Rural Metro, and I get them confused between Rural Metro and Southwest Ambulance.
And EMR.
I don't, same thing. Okay. So when that big, you know, to-do was going through, that they were filing bankruptcy, and we're all going, oh my gosh, what does this mean? I never want to see our city in that situation again. And so, you know, from, from one end to the next, in an umbrella of public safety, the best way of success is that we're seeing it all the way through. And that includes us having our own ambulances. And you know how I feel about community paramedicine. I, I believe that that's the future for, you know, healthcare and, and some of, you know, the, the people that fall through the cracks or the, the heavy users of a system that doesn't need to be used that way. So I'm, you know, I, I believe that we need to move forward. I think that the, Bill had some strong argument about, look what we spend on the library. We even discussed before, look what we spend in parks and rec. We always subsidize different things. Well, if you can't say we're going to, we're going to subsidize parks and rec, but we're not going to subsidize, you know, public safety, yeah, that's, that's crazy. The only thing that I, I do question when we look at the financial impacts of this is that bad debt. Chief, you and I discussed this a while back because I was hearing different things. And, and I, you know, at that point, it was at 25% that they were, the consultant was saying.
Right.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said to me, you thought that was extremely conservative, that wouldn't be that high. And now we've even pushed the threshold to 30%. Now, I'm all for being conservative. I'd rather play it safe than not. But I still don't know that we have really a realistic view to know that 30% bad debt is accurate.
Yeah, and so we did talk with our partners, Surprise and Peoria, as we're going through this, to really get at our understanding of how they, they've understood their bad debt. But again, I think that's one of those things that until you get into the business, you really don't understand what that bad debt ratio is. So that's the difficult part, and a lot of it is based on assumptions right now. And again, I think for me, the conservative approach is, is the easiest and the, and the best. But again, you know, being on the record is saying that it is probably very conservative. But we'll see, it's kind of one of those things, we'll see what happens.
I was just surprised to see it go higher than after you and I had spoken. So that was surprising. So I'm with, I think, the majority. I know, Mayor, you haven't spoken yet, but, you know, I, I think we need to move forward. And I don't see us waiting on our laurels anymore. And I think that if there's a partnership out there that can be had with Avondale or anyone else, great. You know, there's always room for, for looking at that. And I hope that the other privatized groups that are out there want to be on board with us, and, you know, we, we move forward and good things.
Thank you. I want to thank the council. That was good conversation. No, if you have something, I'm going to let you speak, and then I'll, I'll end this. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I, I think, you know, Councilmember Osborn, you bring up a really good, I thought this is a work session, people call everyone by their first name.
That's true.
Anyway.
Yeah, we can. I go back and forth.
I have a tie on.
Give you a little pride being in council.
Lose a little circulation.
With names.
Yeah.
So, so Joanne brought up a good, a good point. You know, this is a really good opportunity for a public-private partnership, certainly in the first five or eight years of a program, for us to partner with a private provider in serving our community. And that's the best use of, you know, taxpayer money is, is utilize the best of both worlds by, while we maintain that certificate of necessity. And, you know, I forget the number of states that actually use the CON process. Do you know off the top of your head?
No, it's, it's more in the, in the West than it is anywhere else.
There's far fewer of them.
Yes.
So municipalities never have to fight for this right to provide public service to their community. But we do here in the state of Arizona, and that's what we have. So I, I think, you know, it's a really good opportunity for us to, to, to take that on and, and get that done. And we've said before, you know, we just said we approved the library. We didn't approve the library tonight. We gave, you know, but we gave direction to the manager that, hey, the library, doing it on her own is really important. And what we're saying is this ambulance service is really important. And what we're laying out is that, which we're going to talk about next, are what are our priorities? And we are setting the policy direction to the manager and the staff to execute this now. The library is important, this part is, is important, the second police squad is important. And oh, by the way, rebuilding Station One is important, getting this thing up in Australia. I mean, that's what we pay these guys, huge sums of money, to figure that all out. And I'm expecting that sometime in, in April, we're going to hear the, well, here's the result of all those things, so we've had to make some adjustments. But public safety, we've all said, is the number-one priority for us as a community. And this, we're in that, we're in the public safety business. And the next thing is the public benefit, which is that rec center. That's the other priority that we've been talking about for a long time. And now it's, we've set the policy direction, now we've got to let the staff do their work.
Thank you. Well, just a couple of things I heard that, that I don't, I didn't hear the same thing as we were presented, I think. One is that Peoria and Surprise have completed a year and in the process have not.
Surprise just completed their first year. Peoria completed their first week.
Oh, first week, okay. So Surprise would have some kind of statistics after a year.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're closing out that first year, so I don't know when that would be available to us or how much we could get, gather from.
Okay, I had just heard that it would be another year for both of those cities, and I thought I had heard that one of them would probably move more like months than another year. The other thing is the bad debt. My guess is the bad debt is going to get worse rather than better because there's so much uncertainty with what's going to happen, with what Medicare is going to pay and, and what insurance companies are going to pay. I mean, that's, I, I think it was mentioned in the, the paper we were given to read on it very strongly, that there's a real uncertainty what's going to go on in that, in, in that arena. And so that, that to me is kind of a red light that we would probably be looking at some changes at least, and probably not more pay. That would just, I mean, I know in the other areas, Medicare is not doing more pay, it's doing less and less pay. And, and the other thing is the library. We knew when we, when the library, we went into partnership with the library, that this was coming up at this time in this year. This is not a surprise. This is not like we just pulled it out of the air and we all of a sudden decided to do it. This was a partnership that we went into three, I guess they're not, three, five years ago? Probably five years ago.
We knew it was coming.
So, so we've known for years that this was coming. This was not something that was delivered to us on January 30th, 2017, and all of a sudden, oh my. I mean, we knew this was coming and, and a commitment that we were going to have to, if we had a library, we were going to have to have a commitment one way or the other, either take it over ourselves or stay in partnership. So that's kind of been like, oh, we, we decided that was 700, well, but we've known that for years and known we had to budget that for years. And I just kind of, um, I I and I don't know that I've mentioned it before, I thought I had earlier, but philosophically, I kind of have a problem with government going into competition with private enterprise. We've had, or I have, over the years, had many discussions with the prisoners doing printing. And and so that was resolved by they would print only for government and would not, uh, go out and solicit printing jobs from, um, the business community, for example, that they would seek it from the city of Goodyear or others. So I do have a philosophical problem when when the the company we have, um, our contract with is performing according to the standard that we have asked of them. That's called a public-private partnership, I believe. And I don't know that, uh, so I do have philosophically an issue with that as well. So.
Thank you. Any other? Sher- Sheri.
Uh, there's just two things, I think, that that brought up from what Bill said and everything. When we talk about some of the the issues that we've been talking about with fire, and I think Joanne brought it up with the fire station and everything, those are obviously still priorities for us. But I think it's important that the public knows, and those that didn't hear last time, is that the part, the community partners in Estrella, that one is pretty much going to be taken care of. So we we know that, we know we have to build 181, but we do already have the equipment and the people for 181. They haven't gone anywhere, they're 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 there. So I think the the public needs to hear that so that people don't get antsy and think that, oh, we don't have enough resources because we're gonna build three fire stations. Well, Estrella, we do have a funding source, thanks to the hard work of our our city manager and our attorney. We do have that one taken care of.
And the cooperation.
And the cooperation, I already said community partners, already got them.
Okay, just wanted to be sure you did.
And and 181, that is going, we we have people for that, there, that's not going to change, that line item stays the same. I see, I disagree with Sherilyn a bit about we're going into a private industry. The private industry came into what should be the government. That is our main purpose as a government. There's a lot of fun stuff we do, a lot of nice stuff we do, but public, safety, roads, what, I mean, that is, that's what government is here, those are the basics of government. And I just see this as part of public safety. So I don't like turning over duties that necessarily, when talking about public safety, was back to what Joanne said about the continuum of care, to a private partnership, especially when we don't really know what's going to happen, and we've had those issues in the past. Goodyear Fire has been there, Goodyear Fire is going to be there. As long as Goodyear is here, Goodyear Fire will be here. So that's my thoughts.
So it's, the process will be seamless?
Yes.
Yes, I think that's what you were, the final, maybe your conclusion of that. I just want to thank council for all your opinions. I did want to just confirm that it, because we're looking at a great deal for this this budget. We've talked the fire, building the fire department, okay, it's gonna cost, right? And then we have to equip it, and we, so it's what, 2 million? Is that the 2.1 million or something, a fire station?
No, it's more than that, Mayor. To construct a fire station.
Start it, though, you said something like that, and then the end is what?
Well, for the construction, you know, we're estimating in in the $5 million range for the operation and maintenance of that station, anywhere from 1.7 to 2.2 million, depending.
Okay, that's where I got the 2 million.
Yes.
Okay, so we have that to look at, we have so many to look at, and we have yet to really look at the bottom line and the numbers, correct? Does everybody have a number in their mind, what a revenue is gonna be and what the process? No, we don't have that yet, so that makes it very difficult. I agree with every, what everyone said, and I felt very comforted that we can, if we decide to delay this, or once we apply, that you do have some leverage over delaying it somewhat within that process.
We, once, if if we decide, once we put the application in, we can pull that application back prior to them approving it.
And and pulling it back means what? Killing it?
Wrong it.
Okay.
Withdrawing it.
Okay, withdrawing, we need to make that clear. Because it hasn't been clear during this. I gave you the feeling that we could change our minds and then hold off and then still say, okay, now I'm ready to progress forward. So I think you've gotten the message from the council tonight, so the next person, yes.
And Mayor, thank you very much for that summary. I I think we do have clear direction. I just want to, because we'll be dropping the application in in February, and just want to confirm, um, we're proposing going forward with the 24, the 12, the 24, the 12. So that would be in our application. So a lot of tonight was to go through the figures, look at the the consultant's report, and then look at our numbers. It's obviously going to be someplace in between. But as such, we would be looking at submitting the application for, um, the four ambulances plus the two reserves. So it, that's, as I understand that right now, because in the application, you would be putting in there what your level of service would be. So just want to confirm we're okay with that, or do we need to amend how we're going forward with the number of ambulances? Because we will be coming back to council the end of February for going forward.
Joanne?
Oh, I I was looking at the boys. Because there had been discussion of, do we keep it at the four years or do we stretch it to six? I don't know, what what's the thought?
Bill?
Yep, so, you know, I think, um, I heard a lot of different things tonight, but the most important thing that I heard was we need to stretch this timeline out from four years to something greater. Again, I'm not trying to do the staff's work, but I would look at this and say, you're probably looking at stretching this to five or six years. Two years per. And dragging it out that way.
Well, that's comforting.
And then, which eases some of the burden. In addition to that, we also suggested, at least I did, and I heard some people go, yeah, maybe we looked at, you know, double check the need for some of these positions. And some of these are not necessarily related to the CON application as much as they are related to the city operations, so I think they're two different things. I don't think the Department of Health Services cares whether we have a mechanic or not as much as the Fleet Department does, so.
So is that, I didn't get that impression, I thought you had to with the contract with the con. No, you said, I just assumed you had to have the number of mechanics, they said.
No, they need to see the impact from the positions, so not nothing about.
Okay, it's not, so those words were coming from what we we are supposing.
Correct.
So I I guess the direction that, and I can't make a motion, but I would suggest that maybe we look at reevaluating the number of new positions that we're adding.
Well, I I think that's a good point.
Anybody else believes that?
Because the public, no, the public is really concerned about how many, how many employees we have in this city. It's a question they ask all the time.
Absolutely, Mayor.
And they, and and so we need to answer them in truth why it is. And so if we need those employees, we have to be able to substantiate that figure.
Yes.
It's very, very important to them.
I agree.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Vazilla or Joe?
Joe's fine.
Whatever you want.
It could be Bill. You can call me Bill, Ray J., no, no, I can't. I like the stretch because the stretch minimizes the impact. Six, to me, is a good number.
Okay.
Mayor.
Bali?
I'd like to ask a question, I should have written it down, I apologize. So you're going to hire civilian employees?
Correct.
To run the ambulance?
Yes.
So they will not be making firefighter pay and benefits, correct?
They would be receiving civilian EMT or paramedic pay and benefits.
Would it be the same as as our firefighter sat?
It would be under the ARS, ASRS pension system as opposed to the public safety pension system.
So, I'm sorry.
There's a lesser dollar value to that employee.
All right, so we're saving money there.
Yep.
And when the ambulance, um, transport the patient, is the paramedic, the fireman, paramedic still gonna be on board?
There's a potential that that could happen in a critical patient, so that your your example of a person having a heart attack, yes, they would probably take one of the end, the medics off the engines.
Okay.
To to assist with the patient, but we don't have to pay the ride-in fee.
No, that's true.
However, we don't get the ride-in fees anymore from our our contract unless they're still around and we're negotiating some type of a ride-in fee.
Thank you, that's that's all.
Build out on the on the, um, personnel for the ambulance, it's a, it's civilian, so non-suar, but it's a paramedic and an EMT on each.
Those are the two, sorry. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And I I'm assuming you have an idea with this council?
Yes, we do, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Is it item, is an overview of the draft city strategic plan for FY 18-20, excuse me, reflecting the changes requested during the October 2016 council retreat. Pam, either beer? Just a minute, you know, I talked to over 2,000 people in the last two days, and I've sort of lost my voice. Pam, we are assistant to the city manager to present.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I look forward to this opportunity to present to you the newest draft of the City of Goodyear strategic plan. Due to the process, I don't want to call them delays, but the evolving look and feel of the strategic plan, we are now looking at more like a fiscal year 18 through 20 timeframe for this plan tonight. So tonight, I'll do a very brief background on the steps that led us to the current draft that we are discussing here today. Then I'd like to go over all of the recommended plan changes that were discussed at the council retreat and share that progress with you. After those sections, then I would like to open it up for an opportunity for discussion to reach consensus on each of those changes. There are a total of five questions that'll walk us through one by one to seek consensus on. And then we'll conclude with hopefully charting the path forward to adopting a new strategic plan.
Mayor? Pam, are you gonna have frequent stops for questions in the middle, or are you gonna wait until the very, very end?
I was planning to wait to the end of the discussion of the five changes. I'm happy to amend that if that's desired.
What would you like, Bill?
Well, what I'm, me personally, am finding if we wait in, we're waiting until the very, very end, it's almost too long. I mean, I wait, you know, a segment and then a natural break and then go, okay, any quick questions? No, let's move on. But if we wait until the very, very end, I'm get, I don't know about the rest, I'm getting distracted.
Well, I don't want that, so.
And I'm just speaking for myself, so.
So you gave me a reason there, how does the other council? The reason we were doing this, the reason we're doing that is the staff does a presentation. And then in the middle of, you think of something you want to ask, it has nothing to do with, it's down the six, six slides down or four slides down. So then we get caught up in that, and you know, we do talk a great deal on this council. So that was the whole purpose of it, so it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't to make you, to not allow you to understand it or ask the questions you want. So if that happens, and make sure that it's within the confines of of what you're being presented, but if it's one of another one, it makes it longer and kind of breaks it up.
Well, I'm not suggesting we do the interruption as the idea comes to your head and then stop.
Oh, but that's what happens.
Yeah, that's, I'm not suggesting that.
I want you to realize the reason it was, we just didn't make this rule because...
Yeah, but if there's a natural break, can we just stop?
Natural break is a good word, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, if I may, there are, I do have five distinct questions, and so I would be happy to do them one at a time. I just want council to know there are five of them, so if we get through the first one, et cetera.
All right, let's see how, let's see how it goes.
Alrighty, so the brief background, as you know, we've been over this a few times in the last year. The first strategic action plan in Goodyear was adopted in 2013. A second iteration was updated and formally adopted in 2014. Then in 2015 and 2016, there were formal presentations at work sessions to provide status updates on the progress of the plan, but there has not, in fact, been an updated plan adopted by council since 2014. During the last plan cycle in 2016, council opted to delay adoption of a new plan so that further direction could be received at the October 2016 council retreat, which we have since accomplished. At the high level, the strategic plan has a vision and focus areas that were adopted by council. I will not read them to you, but just know, those are the long-term foundations of the strategic action plan. And the four key focus areas that have remained consistent are fiscal and resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, and quality of life. The previous and or current strategic action plan structure, to remind you, it currently has four levels of content. It has the focus areas, which we just covered, then it has council goals. Those are sort of high-level overarching direction for the city. Following that has actions. Those actions over time have been set both by council and by city management and our individual departments. And those actions have been adopted along with the rest of the plan. And then in addition, the plan has served in the past as more than just a plan, it's also served as the vehicle for reporting updates as well. So it's become a very dense document. The the currently adopted plan is 75 pages long and contains 91 individual action items. Now, when we talk about best practices in strategic planning and so on, it's no surprise as we've talked about, once you have something like 91 items, it's it's harder and harder to filter what are those key priorities to focus on, moving into budget processes and things like that. And also, the comprehensive update of the progress of the plan has traditionally only occurred annually on that update cycle. The final piece of background, I'll just remind you generally of our performance management cycle in Goodyear. The strategic plan is one component of several initiatives that the city works toward. We actively seek citizen input through a variety of ways on how the city is is doing and what's community priorities are. We do have an annual city council retreat to discuss high-level issues, including setting strategic action plan priorities. Following that, we have been doing an annual update of the plan. Then we also adopt, develop and adopt the budget. Departments also adopt their own operation plan updates following the implementation of a new fiscal year budget. And along with all the work that's going on, we are working toward measuring our performance, monitoring our finances, and so on. So all of these different pieces fit into the overall performance management puzzle. All right, so given the current situation I described with the plan, and after the previous two work sessions and council retreat discussions regarding the plan, under the direction of council, we have proposed a new draft to try to meet the needs of re-elevating the strategic plan to a higher level while also accommodating the desire to ensure that we maintain accountability and transparency with the progress of the plan as we move along. So the intent by elevating that plan to that strategic level is for it to become a vehicle simply for the overarching three-year priorities of council, while the other components of our performance management system will sort of take over the reporting of the plan's progress. Each part that currently exists in the plan will not disappear, it will simply sort of reallocate to the appropriate level of work in the city. So this is where I have the quick overview of the key questions, and then each slide breaks down the questions, so that's when I will pause one by one for questions. So the four, the four recommended plan changes on the screen, and then there's a fifth more minor one that I'll add at the end. They came directly from discussion at the council retreat. I'm going to, as I said, I'm going to generalize, generally summarize each one, and then we'll go into more detail. So the first you'll see is the addition of guiding principles. Council recognized a distinction between the plan elements that were finite, achievable objectives, while others were more sort of prescriptions for how the city could, should conduct business. For example, implementing a new financial system is a project that can truly be accomplished, while the continued use of volunteers is a way in which the city accomplishes work. So guiding principles will will encompass the latter, so those ongoing, this is how we do business type remarks. And those would be removed from the body of the plan and no longer be treated as action items that are finite. Instead, they will be woven into the foundation of Goodyear's culture and be part of, sort of like our vision, part of the the fabric of how the city does work. And the next slide will go into the detail. The second change discussed at council is the addition of a new goal and the sense of community focus area based on council direction around community gathering spaces, and I'll get into that. The third is to remove, and this is kind of the big one, so... The third is to remove, and this is kind of the big one, so this is to remove the actions and the activities, so those two bottom levels of the plan out of the strategic plan. Again, doesn't mean we're going to stop doing them, doesn't mean we are not going to report on them, just means we are going to streamline, if you will, the strategic plan to truly be a plan. Let's see. Okay, we're through that. And then the fourth one that you see on the screen is the addition of an appendix of accomplishments. Council expressed a desire to preserve the history of sort of strategic plans of years past. What has the city accomplished? What are key examples of the work that descends from these council goals? And so that would be an ongoing appendix that would be added to, to showcase the work that the city does in a way that is separate from that three-year horizon of council. And then finally, the last change to consider that's not on the screen has to do just with the timing of everything. So in the past, the strategic action plan was approved following the budget process, usually in the July-August timeframe, which actually occurred just a couple of months before the council retreat. And there were some frustrations, I think, this last round of bringing you an updated plan a full eight or nine months after your retreat. Think a lot has changed and so on in those months. And so the proposal would be, if you move forward with an adoption of a new plan around this timeframe, that from here on out, the annual cycle occurs between the council retreat and the start of the development of the budget process, so that it nicely dovetails and sets those high-level priorities moving into budget. So something for your consideration. So now we will go through those questions one by one, and I'll take consensus and feedback as we go.
Questions? Let me start on this side, Bill. Anybody on this side? Oh, all right, then I'm going to give it to Stip. I'm just trying to play fair in the sandbox. Come on.
No, this was a, this is one of those natural breaks before we get into the, into the piece. Let me just generically say I'm really excited about the changes, because I know I've been the biggest thorn in the side on this one. And you're going to talk about each of the breakdown areas, the guiding principles, et cetera, and then each of the focus areas. But before we get to that, I'm curious about the, about adding a fifth focus area that mirrors the PBB five. We stayed with four. You've gone through all this revision, and we stayed with the original four. Is there a reason we didn't add that fifth PBB focus to kind of bring this whole thing together?
I believe the only reason is we haven't had express council direction to do so. I would rely on people with slightly more institutional knowledge, certainly, but I know that the, currently the PBB results maps are aligned with the four focus areas, and the transportation goal and the public safety goal are rolled into existing focus areas. That's how it's been dealt with. I will say, you know, as me coming in still relatively new to the organization, but with a background in strategic planning, I see a progression of this plan that would slowly expand those focus areas to be more specific and maybe a couple more that might mirror the PBB results map. So I would leave that up to council direction, certainly, but it's not, it's absolutely part of the discussion moving forward.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there, if that would add value to the count, to the other, you know, the other council members or not, that those two things were similar. And, and I'm assuming there's going to be a little bit more work after tonight, so I don't know if that, if maybe even bringing that, you know, kicking that up out to everybody and say, hey, this is what Bill was talking about, and do we want to add it, might be a further discussion. So that was before you even got down this road to have, to have that piece. I just leave it up to everybody else.
So your question is on guiding principles?
No, it was actually before that.
Okay.
We've, you know, Pam outlined the, the four focus, the four strategic focus areas of fiscal and resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, quality of life. There is a fifth result component of PBB that we could put in our strategic plan, so now PBB has the same thing as our plan does, and these things mirror one another. And we didn't hear, we haven't heard that suggestion. We heard the other suggestions, which made, made some sense, so I was just asking if there was any consideration. And, and then I guess I asked my counterparts, is there any desire to have those mirror one another?
Thank you for clarifying that, because I'm not sure everybody knew. So council, let's respond to that.
I wasn't in any of the discussion, because I was not at the council retreat, so I am out of this complete discussion, because it's, I don't want to, I don't want to get in on it, because I don't know any of the background, so I'm.
Council of Zola?
Yeah.
I'm still not sure of the exact question. Are you looking at another? No, seriously. Are you looking at another?
I had the same trouble, that's why I questioned him, being very kind.
So let me just, let me back this up then. If I can ask the manager and the staff, can we provide that fifth result map piece?
If I'm not mistaken, yeah, there are six total, and as it stands now, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, the, the fifth and sixth, one is public safety, and the other, I believe, is transportation, transportation and mobility. Currently, public safety fits under quality of life, and transportation and mobility fits under sense of, under economic vitality. And so I think from a practical standpoint, if we were to make that change, it would be simply adding five and six and sort of like reallocating the existing goals would be kind of the intermediate step.
So that may come up, make them up later. I'm about two steps probably ahead of everybody else, and I, perhaps at this point, it might be more confusing to add it than it is to leave it out.
I'm getting that feeling from the council, because everybody's looking like.
Now that we've had the generic conversation, you guys can kick it around for future updates, but.
If I understand what Pam said, it's, it's just a matter of form, because it's already covered. It's under four as opposed to breaking out separately into six, right? So neither here nor here to me. I mean, it's not we're missing anything, we're, it's just the way it's set up.
So Bill, you're talking about that other tool that we were looking at the day of the retreat, correct?
Right.
Right, and, and I totally believe that, you know, we use PBB for a reason, and so why not use the tools that come with PBB? So I see how it's, you want to see it generate, and just, I think at the very end of this, you talk about Invisio's reports, right? And so to me, they go hand in hand, I guess. I have those little losses where you're wanting to put it, but I do agree that using all the tools that we have coming with the programs that we've, you know, signed on to, we should, so.
Well, yeah, my thought was if we're using the same terminology in PBB and our strategic plan now, in our minds, there's some alignment. The Invisio tool is going to help bring, bring further clarity to that. And that was my only thought, but if it's going to be a huge undertaking at this point, maybe it's best left for the next update. So I just, was just throwing it out there.
What I would recommend based on the direction received is, this is a pretty big change. These, these proposed changes are a pretty decent departure kind of from how Goodyear has done business in this context. And so, you know, what I would envision the next step, assuming something like this does get approved by you all, is we will want to take a hard look at the, you know, this is streamlining the plan, the next step is sort of really digging into the content again once we have a structure that we can all speak a common language about. And so an opportunity to revisit the focus areas and the existing goals, the, the next retreat would be the perfect opportunity to really dig into that.
Okay.
Do I have a question? Okay, back to your changes slide. I love that we're doing the appendix and the new goal, guiding principles, I remember all that. You know, I know that I'm a planner, but I'm not, I'm not, you know, versed and educated in how you put a strategic plan together like others at this table maybe, who live it and breathe it. I won't mention any names.
I will second that statement.
Okay, however, removing the actions and activity, it's not a control freak, but it's an interest in, I like how you're going to get somewhere. I'm detail-oriented, I appreciate that. So I believe within your, you're going to talk about it, but we will be seeing these activities, right? Or actions. You'll be presenting quarterly, you're going to be doing, so, so, I mean, at the, if every year goes by, and we didn't accomplish one of our things, you're going to be able to come back and you've proved us, why did, we tried all these different actions or activities to follow up on it, right?
Yes, we will, I have, I do have a slide dedicated to that, so I will be sharing.
Example of what I was trying to explain about when we stop here, so that brings up.
Oh, I know, but it's right here, talking about the changes.
You're right, I just want to bring, I just want to bring that out as this flows. Go ahead.
All right, so I'll move us along to question number one, and I promise, two, three, four, and five are coming. So, so question number one is around this concept of adding guiding principles statements to the strategic plan. Now, what I have included on this slide are the 10 abbreviated guiding principles, and your attached draft contains, each one has about a three-sentence explanation that, that sort of goes more deeply into how Goodyear does business. These are the 10, they were generated, a combination of my own experience and research on other city strategic plans. Councilmember Stip provided, just sort of some rough draft notes at the retreat, those were also brought into consideration, as well as really scouring our own strategic plan and saying, what are the really significant themes that have come out of this? There's no magic number in 10, if there's an 11th, or you want to bring it down to nine, no big deal. The idea is not to have 91 of them though, so we kind of tried to encapsulate the categories at hand. So those are on page eight to nine of the draft, if you want to follow along. And I would love specific feedback on the scope of these. Is there something missing? Do you accept the general concept and want those pages in your strategic plan?
Feedback?
I have one. I just.
Joanne?
Let me ask you guys how you feel. I mean, we just have discussed a continuum of care within our city, and I don't know, is that, do you see that there, comprehensive approach to safety? Is that, would you consider that?
I would put it there.
Okay.
Maybe just add public safety.
Yeah, I would subtitle it under that. Break out in too many, and then there's no connectivity there.
No, I agree, but I just want to make sure we're capturing what we've been discussing here, is, is that.
Can I suggest?
Wait a minute. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a very big difference between a comprehensive approach to safety and ensuring a healthy community.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you look through a lot of the, the focus areas and, and our vision.
Even the wellness park adding, and that, I mean, that's still, you know, that is, that is.
I think we need to, I think we needed to call that out, you know, separately, and, and I don't know if comprehensive approach to safety is enough. And one of the notes that I made generically, which is later on under quality of life, is we need a stronger public safety statement. And if you think about the amount of hours that we've spent in the last three months talking about public safety issues, and, and our, we have one goal that's, that talks about identifying public safety process improvements and innovative programs that ensure a safe community. I mean, that's it. And I think we have a much bigger dedication to a safer community than that, and maybe this is the, the guiding principle is the way to, to showcase that. I don't know.
I know I said I would be quiet, Mayor, but I'm sorry.
I know you couldn't be.
I don't know how to be quiet. But I have a question, though, and, and I, I wasn't there, so where it says the well-being under comprehensive approach to safety bill, where it says community through the investment in sound transportation, what have we done? Did I miss the bus? We've got the zip rider, or whatever you call it.
I would look at that and say, I hear sound transportation and stormwater infrastructure and emergency planning. Our sound transportation is our roads are maintained, we've got an active and accurate streetlight system. But again, that goes back to my point.
See, I looked at it for a bus, for transportation for citizens, I'm sorry.
Yeah, see, that goes back to my point of we need a statement about public safety.
Okay.
Comprehensive approach deals with everything, but what about public safety and public health? Isn't that inclusive in that, you don't think?
It doesn't speak.
Sherry?
I, I think it, it says it in there, but I agree with Bill, it doesn't, like, really, it's kind of all, it does say police and fire in there, but it should probably be a standalone as public safety. I also, this might be nitpicking, so I might be in Bill-land right now.
I think I've got big shoulders.
But, yeah. But it seems like our, our second priority is community and data-driven priorities. I, I.
Doesn't say much to you, does it?
I want to speak what we care about, what we're passionate about is our first priorities, you know, well-being of citizens, public safety, you know, data-driven. I, I'm, if I'm a citizen, I'm reading this, I'm not getting past there, and I'm not going on down to read about public safety, because you turned me off at data-driven, that's boring. You know, I want what's passionate about my community, if this is like the executive summary that these people are going to read. Because what, the problem with the plan before was it was pushing, what, 100 pages? It was, it was a novel. So I want something that really does speak, and I agree with Bill, I think we probably should break that out and move it up.
Vice Mayor Lortano, so I'm understanding, are you referring really to the order of how these appear?
Yeah, as I said, I might be nitpicking a little, it's not, it's just, it seems like if I'm reading down these, you know, process, continuous process improvements.
It doesn't identify exactly what the direction's going.
It's just so overly technical, that a principle is, we strive to, you know, help our residents lead safe lives, or, you know, or we, we support the public safety for the
It's sort of everyday language, is I think what she's saying.
It's too techie.
Very government-y.
Yeah, it's too government-y. It's, it's like when I interview like a cop, and we see, I, I effectuated a traffic stop. Just say you pulled the guy over, you know?
I guess, that's a good way to make that point, Sherry.
Get to the, get to the normal people, you know, talk.
Thank you.
Well, well, I know you understand the references, and you, you can actually pull it apart and give maybe 10 particular subjects under that, but I don't think it's resonating with the council. We want it to, but we're just not there at that level to be able to do that and, and progress and be able to do what we want to do. Is that, is that kind of where you're at, everybody? No offense, but just.
No, no offense is taken, I want to clarify a couple of things. In general, do you still want to have these guiding principle messages in the plan? Are, are the overarching themes where they need to be?
The themes are there, it's just the titles don't afford understanding to it.
And I can absolutely, I can absolutely work the language. I just wanted to ensure the direction, I have a strong message, strengthen that public safety message.
Dumb it down.
Kiss, kiss, keep it simple, that's what, that we like. But, but actually, because that goes in print, and so we produce these out, and the people read it, and so we want them to understand.
Absolutely.
They'll come back and say, well, you're not doing anything about this public safety, and you're not doing it, so we need to, we need to have it.
And that's great perspective to remind me of, because I do.
For all audiences.
Marinate in this world. So, you know, I can take these, I hear the strong message, strengthen the public safety message, make that front and center. That, you know, the comments on safe streets and stormwater and so on, there is that idea of investing and maintaining infrastructure, maybe that's kind of where that message belongs. And then one additional referring to healthy community, all of them as a whole, make them more comfortable for our citizens to read. Absolutely. Anything else on the guiding principles?
Thank you, council, for bringing that forth. Go ahead.
All right, so the second question was around the addition of a fourth goal in the sense of community focus area. Before we dig in, I will add, the reason we're kind of just calling out this one additional goal is this is something that has come up again and again in conversation. I do foresee the next council retreat being a great opportunity to dig into the goals at large, but following the direction of the last council retreat, it was, we don't want to go through this one by one by one. So this is an opportunity to add a goal that has been in conversation for the entire time that I've been here.
Counsel? Joe?
You know, the sense of community, where you have the parks and improvement and recreation amenities, to me, that's, that's great, and that's an important part. But also what I think makes this a great community, when I talk about sense of community, is volunteerism and people who step up whenever we need them to help do what we do, whether it's a commission, whether it's the 30,000 hours that we get, you know, helping out at the city, saving us money, where they stepped up during the recession to help us get through those tough times. I think somehow that's got to be interwoven in there to promote or.
I like that.
To recognize, because to me, that's what makes us a great community, is that activity and involvement of our residents in stepping up and helping, the volunteerism.
That also sends a message out to the public, how appreciative they are.
It just uses different words.
Yeah, but I mean.
It does say that, but I think, again, when we're talking about.
I think it should be called out, because to me, that's what makes this a great community, it really does.
We're the city of volunteers, so.
I know.
You know?
But, again, when we had the Great Recession, what was it, 910, they helped us, helped build us out on a lot of that, by stepping up and taking over roles within the city that have saved us a lot of money, so, again, that's one thing I'm very proud of, as community, is we are a community of volunteers.
I think the point that he's making, and I have to agree with him, that actually when the citizen sees it, it puts pride in them, so we're talking about them now, volunteerism, okay, the rest of it, we're, we're talking about what we're going to do, but it puts them in, on the team, so the citizens, I, that's the impression I get from that, I don't know, is anybody else?
The one thing that it, it goes in constant with is that in your, how, with your works, you have active resident engagement, so, I mean, you should follow through with what you're saying.
Just a little thanking them, you know, putting emphasis back on our residents for stepping up and helping out.
And, and I think it's a wording, again, active resident engagement, as opposed to wonderful volunteers.
It's like they've accomplished something that, that we couldn't accomplish, and they were able to take, take that lead and do it, no, I, I think, I think it's a good idea. Anybody else kind of, without voting on this?
The word that they used was cultivated through citizen engagement.
I'm sorry, what?
That's, that's part of.
Oh, you have a piece of paper on you, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, my, my thing didn't.
No, I.
I think it's, I appreciate that language, but I think it's a little more than that, because it's not just cultivating, they step up and they do it, and they.
It's action.
That's where it's, that, that was how they, it is stated, but that's how it's stated, that's what I'm.
Yeah, you're just saying, and how do you feel about how they, how it's stated compared to what Joe was saying?
I'd just like a little more. Personally, I, I just think it's a, a major attribute of this community, I'd match us up against anybody, to be honest with you, in that area, you know, I mean, even on the board that we're on, I mean, there's a lot of volunteer and nonprofit organizations in here that step up, so, I'd just like it to be highlighted somewhere, that thank you, like a thank you and a tip of that, what do you want to call it, to our, to our lovely residents that step up and, and, and help others, that's all. I don't know how you word it, but I think a little more specific would be helpful to our, from my perspective, it's like a thank you to them, that we, we pride in what they're doing, yeah, and acknowledgement of what they're doing out there.
So what we're saying to Pam is, make sure that when we're talking about that, we're making it more personal.
May I ask for some clarification again on that?
Yeah, I think voluntary, if you put it in, like Joe said, that, that, that's a story that, that tells it, if you put it in with a name that includes it for other things, I think you're trying to target something, you're targeting not just volunteerism, but how they've take ownership of their city by the extraordinary number of hours and money they have saved in comparison to other, other cities, so however that can be put in.
I don't know how that word gets there, but that's, I just want to try to capture that.
So what I hear is speaking more toward that guiding principle, again, that, that, that wording in that guiding principle about engaging our residents, you want to highlight volunteers, what I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, when we're talking goals, so, right, so we're going through kind of the levels of our plan, when we're talking goals, we're talking the three-year things that council is driving, and our volunteerism is important, and we want to consistently grow that, but that's not something that we're going to say, in three years, we are going to accomplish X. What this goal is really referring to is the extensive investment council is working on moving forward in community gathering places, which to me is a separate, distinct goal that I've been hearing from council, and so I just don't want you to lose that.
No, no, I, I.
So, I hear you loud and clear, and I've made a note here that as we go through to kind of finalize this, ensure that that volunteerism rises to the surface.
No, I agree, Pam, because I think this is the one I was pushing, as well as gathering places, all right, so, but to me, the volunteers is a little, little off of that branch, but I'd like to figure out a way to, to highlight that, because again, I'm so proud of our, our residents that step up and help us, I just, you know, wish a way, somehow we get that in there, that they are a big difference, and they are a reason why we're a community and not just a collection of neighborhoods, so.
Absolutely, and as you know, that is one thing that we track yearly and celebrate yearly, so that is absolutely at the forefront of, of our work as well.
Joe?
Okay, so, do you have your sense of community adding that, do you have your direction on that, because I'm going to go in a slightly different direction.
I've felt positive support, but I don't know if I've heard from everybody, there was support as of the council retreat to move forward with this, so that's why it's back in front of you as a part of this draft, okay.
So you're okay with what it says?
Sense of community, yeah.
Sense of community, okay.
Adding that goal for it. Adding this goal for?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So, my slightly different direction under quality of life, because I noticed that wasn't in the, you know, you're not going to go through each one, and I said it a few minutes ago, one of our, do we need to add a goal that makes a stronger public safety statement? Right now, you'd have to look at the plan, which a couple of us printed, but on page 14, we have goal one, oh, we can do Elmo, hold on, we're going to do Elmo.
Yeah, well, let me see if I can go back and forth.
This'll be easier.
Oh, is item 14?
You have to go to page 14 in the document itself.
Okay, I'm going.
Oh, here, she's got it up on Elmo. So, we have goal one, which is identify public safety processes and improvements, process improvements and innovative programs, but.
What does that mean?
It's a government-y thing, and it's a goal, and I, I get that, and we still want to do that, we still want an innovative public safety program that ensures a safe community, but a stronger public safety statement that, and I'll let you guys deal with the words, but do we need to have a goal five, which talks about our commitment to public safety and our commitment to a healthy community through that public safety, because we've had discussions with, you know, PD about, you know, domestic violence issues, and we heard from the judge about all these other things that are going on, and I think that, that kind of all rolls in together, where we really want to identify that, hey, a, a public safe, a safe public in our community is really important to our quality of life, we're not dealing with crime problems, we're not dealing with drug problems, we're not, and there's a reason for that.
Well, go once and ensure.
Make it an extra goal, and leave it up to staff to figure out what that looks like.
Well, goal two says, wait a minute, are we on the same thing? Support initiatives that provide, yeah, support initiatives that provide healthy, quality lifestyles for our diverse citizenry, that's touching it, but it's not, you're completing it.
We're talking all around it, I'm just saying, let's call it out, and again, I go back to, how much time have we spent talking about fire stations, fire station locations?
I think it'd be under goal one.
And then let staff decide what the words are.
Do you get that?
I, I'm hearing add a fifth goal around public safety that really highlights the current state of what you're working toward with paramedicine fire stations, expanding the police force, et cetera.
Right.
And I will add, generally speaking, when we look ahead kind of to the next retreat and the next iteration, you know, if I put my council hat on, there are probably several of these goals that are very general in nature, that over time, I think council can refine to be those three-year goals, so, you know, supporting initiatives that promote a healthy, quality lifestyle, that's a fantastic goal to have, that doesn't express what council's pushing for in the next three years, so, without belaboring us completely tonight by starting to go down this path, I would just like to recommend, again, let's, let's make this an incremental process, we'll continue to do these annual updates with the three-year horizon, and ensure that sort of staff can move forward with some direction, rather than keep delaying, but that, that is the, the mission over time, is to refine that language more, but I will add that public safety goal.
That's all I wanted, I just, okay.
Well, I think, think, yes, since the retreat, things have really, you know.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely, and so they should be reflected, so, all right.
And we just, we just want to be sure that it reflects what we want, because we had a strategic plan that reflected not what exactly we wanted, so, we want to be sure we're being heard of what we think the priorities are.
Yes, and that's why this is the fantastic conversation I have right now, to make sure that happens.
And I think they, I think it's the wording, it's the word you want to see, you want to see the strength of the word, and we don't, and that, I get that from what you said, so it, yeah.
The sentiment is important.
So we want it strong enough that they understand the public safety side of it.
Absolutely. All right, can we have the slides back?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so moving on from the goals, so the next question, so this revolves around that central question of raising the level of this plan to be a true strategic plan, the appendix of accomplishments certainly has been added per your request, and if you have feedback on, you know, what's included and so on, feel free to give that to me at any point, the main point I wanted to hit here, and this is where this tool that we're currently using called Invisio comes into play, as staff, we absolutely want to maintain the transparency and accountability of this plan's progress with you, and with this tool that we're using right now, and even outside of that, what we'd like to do is have a reporting cycle that is, you know, a, a step away from the strategic planning cycle, in that you are getting regular information on the project of your goals, whether they're on track, whether they're behind, and so this just shows you one example of a hypothetical, you know, you have your, your strategic action plan goal, and then you would be receiving reports that on a high level would show you, you know, okay, things are moving along, there are 18 actions and 39 planned activities that are supporting that goal, this tool allows us to drill all the way down into the super weeds as to what's being done to accomplish, but in this way, we can roll up and kind of any combination of information needed, but on a quarterly basis, provide you with a report that covers the goal progress, and that would be the trade-off of removing it from the plan document itself.
So this is confirmation.
Okay.
Confirmation of the goal, is that what we're saying?
There's my detail.
I'm sorry, that, that's, I, did I get that understanding, confirmation of the goal, that we've accomplished that, or where we are in that accomplishment?
Yes, this will be a status update on where the goals are.
Okay, Bill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so, this is just an example, did I hear that right? Because the wording that you used is the, is the goal number one, so would you be using goal, the stated goals to, because some of these, and, and using this one in particular, we will never stop demonstrating fiscal responsibility through our financial policies, that'll never stop, so theoretically, that's not really a goal, because we're never going to reach it, but the, the component that we don't want to have, you know, you've got 39 planned activities, and I know you don't want to list the 39 for this one and the 40 for the other, and, you know, next thing you know, we've got a 96-page document, but at some point, the, this whole thing should, should answer the question, so what? We've got this whole thing, and now, so what? And I, I don't need to know what we did, because that's kind of after the fact, I need to know what we're working on, what things are we working on that, that are supporting those goals that we've set out, and that might sound like an appendix that lists, here's all the things that we're working on, so that at least we know what the, what this means, because right now, this is just colored circles with 18 actions and 39 planned activities, it doesn't tell me anything, and maybe it's not supposed to, but as a council member, if this is my plan and you're working to execute my plan, I sure want to know what you're doing, and maybe I don't need to know that you're counting all the pencils with erasers and compare to the pencils without, but I, I think we need to find somewhere in there, and the, the accomplishments is, if the first question is so what, the last question is big deal, so help me get through that, and then I think our reporting piece goes through it, you know, get.
Absolutely, and forgive me, this, this graphic representation is one little snippet of just the sort of overarching status wheels, the, the way the program will work and the way the report will work is that each goal will have narrative that has been rolled up, so, employees who are working at the, on their planned activities, they're entering updates of, this is, this is what we've done, these are the performance measures that connect to this work, et cetera, that rolls up to sort of the next level, the actions which are set by the departmental operations plans, those are being updated, at the goal level, we have our city management team, as well as some department directors who are saying, okay, of all these different actions and so on, these are the highlights of what's been done, what's ongoing, in order to continue to drive toward that goal, and have, and, by including in those city stat measures over time, we want to get to that place where we are setting those three-year outcome-based measurable goals with council.
This is a tracking process.
I'm okay to let it, to let it play out, I just, I, I think it's really important that we, that we start with so what, and we end with, it's less about, you know, what we accomplished, and it's more about what we're intending to get done. I know we want to celebrate the accomplishments.
So I have to hear something from other council members, or is, is it just, so, okay with how it's presented, okay, anybody else? It sounds to me like we are, and we're going to move on, all right, let's move on.
So the, the fifth discussion, so this was sort of the, at the end, but we've now gone through all four questions, the fifth was just around that timing, are you comfortable with aiming for this update process that follows the council retreat and that precedes the budget?
I'm nodding my head, I don't know about anybody else, am I?
Okay, so, so, do it again, show me the timeline again.
Yep, so essentially, so your council retreat happens in October, within a couple of months after that, we have a session at the beginning of the calendar year where you approve and adopt the updated strategic plan based on your feedback, that's, when that's complete, you feed into the budget process, when the budget is approved, the departments make their operations plans for that year based on what resources they have, and then council sets goals.
Okay, so.
So we won't see this again till after the budget is done?
You will, you will, I will bring this back to you within the next month for an approval pre-budget process.
That was the question last year, too, that's what our, one of our complaints was, we wanted the information, the timing.
Yes.
So if you remember, the timing was not good, and so they've worked on that to provide that, so that the next time we have to make those budget decisions, that we have more information and a better situation, okay? Everybody okay to go on with this? All righty.
Okay, so on to next steps, based on your feedback, you know, there are changes to be made to the final plan, some language that we can work on, we are looking at tentative council adoption of this updated plan for the end of February, just to give staff some time to make these changes, at this point, with your direction, are you comfortable with us bringing that back for adoption based on the direction?
I'm getting yes, for the most part, and of course, you are available if there's a council person here that is having, struggling.
Absolutely, and I'll work with the.
We can certainly come forth with that.
I'll work with the city manager as well, maybe we push that out an extra couple weeks so you have more time to digest it, and then the next council retreat will be in fall of 2017, and it's been tentatively scheduled for November 3rd and 4th.
November 3rd and 4th?
Mm-hmm.
Fourth. I'll put that down right now, so I'm here.
Maybe that's a separate.
Any other questions?
We're still finalizing the retreat date, so.
So hold off on that, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, it's one of my husband's birthday, I'd like to be around one time for it, good, okay, any, anything, any other questions?
That concludes my presentation.
We appreciate the presentation, thank you very much, so that sort of ends it, does council want any, any council reports or events, or manager summary? Well, then, I'm going to, just, I'm looking for the future meetings. Well, then, I'm going to, just, I'm looking for the future meetings. So the future meeting is not on here, so.
Monday, 9.
What?
Next Monday.
I know, but give me a date to give the people. What's the date of the next meeting?